Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the October 21th Justice for Planting Commission Meeting. Call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
Frank Malin.
Here.
Phil Harris.
Here.
Jennifer Guthrie.
Here.
Fallon Young.
Here.
Richard Lamar.
Here.
Brent Brown.
Here.
Dr. Mary Edwards Long.
Here.
Here. Got a full house. Chair, the chair will entertain a motion of approval of the minutes from the September 23rd meeting. So moved.
Second.
Say all, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
One abstain, got you. Okay, there no deferrals today. Our first site plan, who's giving us that, Andy? Alamo Circle Flex Building, DA 2546.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission and members of the public. Thank you, guys, for being here. So the first application is a site plan application. It is DA 2546. Is for three office warehouse buildings and one professional office building located on Alamo Circle. Just so you guys know, site plan approval, if the Planning Commission recommends or approves this site plan, it will allow the owner of the property to apply for building permits and construct the development. So the location of the property is on Alamo Circle. Alamo Circle is off of County Road 10 East. Right at the northern boundary of the city limits of Gulf Shores. The blue highlighted area designates the parcel that we're discussing with this application. So Alamo Circle was approved probably back in the early 2000s. It's a small commercial subdivision. About half of it is developed with commercial type uses. The zoning out there is BG, general business. And with that, we'll go to existing conditions. This lot is currently vacant. Basically, it's a large grassed area. It does have four protected heritage trees on the front corner of the lot. Kind of a unique characteristic of this lot is about the northern 50 feet of the lot is technically not located in the city limits of Gulf Shores. City Limits of Gulf Shores, basically is capped at the northern or the southern boundary of County Road 10 extended. And this lot, because of a kind of a curve in the road there, goes beyond that. So the northern 50 feet is not located in the city limits. Southern, I don't know, 90% of the lot is located in the city limits. So you can see on this screen that kind of corner and how it's not located in the city. General Business, I think all of you know that General Business is a commercial zoning district. Allows a range of different commercial uses. Office uses are allowed by right in the General Business zoning district. The proposed site plan is before you on the screen now, you see the four proposed office and warehouse buildings, the parking lot, and the ingress egress from Alamo Circle. The preserved trees to the north of the property there. It complies with all of the building height, maximum building coverage, impervious coverage. Exceeds the minimum setback to the General Business zoning district as well as the minimum landscape space. And the site provides 42 parking spaces, which is greater than the 33 parking, minimum of 33 parking spaces required by our zoning ordinance. So with that, the site plan complies with all their individual requirements of the zoning ordinance as well as a BG zoning district. Building architecture will be one-story buildings, all of them. They'll all contain 2,600 square feet. Let's see, hardy siding and metal roofs, and the architecture complies with the minimum standards of the zoning ordinance. Access and parking, again, the property will be accessed from Alamo Circle. There is an existing five-foot sidewalk along Alamo Circle. The applicant will connect the front of the buildings to Alamo Circle with a sidewalk. Again, the parking complies with the minimum parking spaces. All the dimensional standards of the parking spaces are, have been met. There will be provided, let's see, curb stops to protect the landscaping from vehicular encroachment as well as the sidewalks will be protected from vehicular, vehicular encroachment with the wheel stops placed in the parking lots. Landscape and tree protection. The applicant has submitted a landscape plan. Does comply with the perimeter, street frontage and parking lot landscape requirements within the zoning ordinance. Again, there are four protected and, let's see, two protected trees and two heritage trees on the property at that northern kind of terminus of the property. All of those trees are proposed to be preserved. The applicant has earned 22 tree credits for the preservation of those trees, and they have been, the tree credits have been applied to their landscape plan. Draining, grading and drainage. The drainage plans have been reviewed and approved by the engineering department. Basically, they're going to utilize the existing contours of the site and collect the stormwater in, in a couple different ponds located throughout the property. Site lighting, a lighting plan was provided. Five pole mounted fixtures are provide, will be, are proposed in the parking lot. Those fixtures do comply with the minimum standards of the zoning ordinance. Site improvements, trash collection, their dumpsters proposed along the southern property line. Has been screened, screened with a wooden dumpster enclosure. And the applicant did submit a letter from Republic Service indicating that that dumpster can be serviced in, in that location on the site plan. Fire marshal and engineering department have reviewed and approved the site plan. And with that, this is the first of, first of a few. We recommend approval with no conditions. So good job to the applicant and the engineer for designing a plan that complies with all of the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Andy. Anybody up here have a question for Andy? On the, on the drainage, we're okay? Are y'all satisfied with the drainage proposed?
Engineering department has reviewed and approved the plans, yes, sir.
Okay with it? George, you're okay with all your stuff?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve site plan DA 2546, Alamo Circle Flex Building.
Okay, got a motion?
Second.
Got a motion and second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor? Okay, motion carried. All right, our first public hearing today is one that we've had many times before. But hopefully this time we'll be able to come to conclusion. DA 2529, the Village at Brights Creek Preliminary Subdivision Plat Extension. I think Andy will explain what's been going on with this, with his plat recommendation. So Andy, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Before we get to the next item on the application, I would like to review the public hearing guidelines since the remainder of the items on the agenda are all public hearings, just so that the members of the public will be aware. So staff will present each of these public hearing items to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission can ask questions of staff. At that point, the chairman will open the public hearing. If you would like to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name, physical address. Any questions or concerns should be directed to the planning commissioners and try to refrain from repeating anything that's been already stated. That point, the chairman will close the public hearing, and then the commissioners will hold any discussion and vote on each individual application. So with that, we'll go to the next, or the first public hearing, which is DA 2529, the Village at Brights Creek Preliminary Subdivision Plat Extension. Many of you are in, well, most, I guess, planning commissioners are aware of this application because it's the third time it's appeared in front of you guys. And I'm assuming that some of the public has heard this for the third time. So the applicant seeks a one-year preliminary subdivision plat extension for the Village of Brights Creek subdivision. Property is located at 18813 and 18837 Oak Road West and 6392 Ralph Sanderson Lane. The maps on the screen show the location of the subdivision. It's to the northwest of the city's sportsplex. And I guess to the northwest of the proposed prop, or the proposed, or the, yeah, the subdivision is existing, primarily existing single-family houses. So existing conditions, Brights Creek is currently under construction. It is, will be a 76 single-family lot subdivision on 43 acres. The property has split zoning. Half of it's R14, which is a single-family zoning district. The other half is R3, which is a multifamily low-density zoning district. The preliminary subdivision plat was approved in November of 14th of 2023. And the subdivision regulations state that a preliminary subdivision plat is good for two years, meaning November 14th of 2025 preliminary plat would expire. That's the reason the applicant has requested an extension. Here's a layout of the Brights Creek subdivision. 43 acres, 76 lots. You see the proposed streets. There's two connections to Oak Road West. One kind of on the south side and then one on the north side, which will be an extension of the existing Shoal Lane. Development timeline, I won't go through all this, but I'll just hit the high points. Again, November 14th of 2023 was when preliminary subdivision plat approval was obtained from the Planning Commission. Land disturbance permit was issued September 12th, 2024. The applicant applied for preliminary subdivision plat extension. It was first heard at the August 26th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. It was, Planning Commission postponed that item until the September meeting. Heard again in the September Planning Commission meeting. Planning Commission, Planning Commission once again postponed the item to today's meeting. So just a little bit more detailed information, the August 26th Planning Commission meeting. Lot of discussion about the base and sub-base and compaction of the roadways. Because city staff did not have the required geotechnical reports, and we were not notified of the roadbase insulation, the Planning Commission ultimately decided to postpone the application to the September meeting. And then at last month's meeting, the results of those tests were unclear. So the Planning Commission directed city staff to hire a third-party geotechnical engineer to perform additional test. So you all voted to postpone the application again to today. So the update for today is we, the city did hire Geotechnical Engineering Testing, Inc. To perform those third-party testing on the roadways out at Brights Creek. The city's consultant performed tests on 25 different locations throughout the development. I think, way I understand it, was like at 200 feet intervals. 10 of those locations passed the compaction reports. 15 of those locations failed the compaction reports. City staff met yesterday with the development team to discuss the results, because we just got those results back. We met with a developer, development team as well as the third-party geotechnical engineering representatives from G E T and discussed those results. Immediately, basically, the applicant understood that some of their locations failed. They immediately started work on those locations, probably either yesterday or this morning, to try to get the compaction test, to rework the soil so they could get the compaction test to pass. Jenny Wolf slog, the city engineer, is here to answer any additional questions about that, as well as Kurt Doyle with G E T Engineering, who's our third-party consultant. So with that, staff recommends an extension of 12 months contingent on the following. These are very similar to the previous recommendations that we've had, but I'll go through them and summarize some of them. Number one, all conditions of preliminary subdivision plat approval. Number two, tree remediation from the five trees that were removed from the common area, eight, shall be provided prior to final subdivision plat approval. The applicant has submitted plans showing how they're going to remediate the trees, so that is in progress. Three, provide a buffer fence along the western property line in accordance with the fencing standards within the subdivision standard, subdivision regulations. That was discussed at both prior meetings about adding additional fencing at the request of property owners. Four, all concrete installed in the right-of-way shall be 4,000 PSI. Five, typical roadway sections should comply with the approved construction plans. Six, class-two thermoplastic two-inch stop bars, two feet, two, yeah, feet stop bars shall be installed with all stop signs. All pavement markings shall be class-two thermoplastic. So number four, number six, basically mirroring the new roadway standards that were adopted a couple months ago. And then seven involves inspection and testing shall be scheduled with the city a minimum 24 hours before the below timelines. And all costs incurred for geotech testing will be reimbursed to the city by the developer. Won't go through all these, but tests will be required prior to street sub-base compaction. That's A. B is prior to placement of all drainage culvert pits, manhole, manholes and other drainage structures. C would be testing prior to placement of the base course. D, testing required with any concrete cylinders that are installed. E is testing the street wearing surface. And then F refers to any of the tests. Kirby and asphalt construction shall be conducted between Monday and Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. only. And then the star down there indicates testing for items A through C will be provided by the city's consultant. Items D through E will be provided by the developer's consultant. And with that, either myself or other members of staff will be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, commissioners, do you all have any questions up here? Andy, this is a very detailed analysis here. Then if there's questions up here, I will ask the developer to come up if he's got anything he'd like to say to the commission before I open up a, you know, a brief public hearing, since, you know, we've already had two. Yes, sir.
Again, Jared White for the developer. These conditions are acceptable to us. We appreciate the commission's patience allowing this testing to be done. I've spoken with the third-party consultant who did the testing, and I think he could address a little bit more what those results are. There, the 15 fails really aren't 15 fails, as I understand it. But the important thing is they're out there retesting, observing, and everybody's going to be satisfied with the results when it's done. I'll dot requires one test a mile, so this is about 25 times the I'll dot standard. So probably be the most thoroughly tested roads in the city of Gulf Shores when all this is said and done, which is a good thing.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question to maybe ask Jenny. Are the BMPs, the best maintenance practices still being managed for the rest of the project? The silt fencing in place and the work around the detention pond and the vegetative areas being maintained and all that? The rest of the process that was some of the angst from the previous meetings?
They are. We've been working closely with the developer and the contractor on site, and the BMPs, they are working to keep up to date. They're checking those after any storm events and repairing any failures very timely. And they're working on getting seed to grow on, on some of those slopes and in some of those ponds, and that's starting to, to seed in as well. So, yes, I think they're doing a good job with the BMPs now.
Thank you.
Have a comment as well? And I do think, thanks for all your work, your staff's work and, and the working together, the collaboration. I do think getting this done is better than a significant delay in what deteriorates and what happens. But getting it done right, obviously, is the goal here and what we're after, and I think what your conditions will lay out. So I'm comfortable with your recommendations. I did have a comment about the fence. I know the fencing's come up a couple of times. I've been to the site, tried to access the adjoining neighboring property line from the development. Couldn't get where I wanted to get when I went out, but did go along George Street. But can we just have a caveat there that we, that, I mean, they've agreed to a fence. You've recommended a fence, but can y'all work closely with them to determine? I hate to see natural buffers cleared to put a fence. And so where we have that, maybe we work not to destroy that, but also look at the area behind lots one through 10 where the neighboring homes back up to a lineal retention pond, which I think is definitely suitable for a fence, keep people out of the retention pond, break up the eyesore. But it, and then there was a, I don't know if you've got a screen, then there was another area that looked like some really significant trees and mature trees that really were not in the area that was a, had negative impact. It may, my whole comment is, can we just work so we don't go in there and destroy a lot of good vegetation just for the sake of putting up a fence that requires a lot of maintenance? But put it where it needs to be, screen the retention ponds, and let's leave as much natural and good planting stuff as we can.
Yes, sir, we'll do that. And just on your screen shows the approved landscape plan. The blue area, they were planting 43 magnolia trees and 414 wax myrtles. There was not a retention pond in that area. It's basically lots backing up to existing lots. And then the yellow area is buffering around a retention pond. And the requirements there are three trees every 100 feet. They were planting a mixture of live oaks, nut-all oaks and bald cypresses in that area. But we'll be happy to work with them if there's any existing vegetation to preserve that and make sure the fence doesn't remove existing vegetation.
Thanks, Andy. Thank you, Andy.
Yeah, one comment. And again, the dovetail on the fence, is there the timeline on the fence? Is that going to be required by final plat or?
It would be required by final plat, yes, sir.
Is there any way to have it built sooner to screen some of the neighbors from the construction itself?
It's a tou, I don't know exactly the, so in some of those areas, they may be still working. I don't know if they could build a fence right now or not, honestly. The developer could probably answer that better than I can.
Hey, Jacob Clemmson with 68 Ventures. So our timeline right now, you know, in the next couple of months, we'll be installing the landscaping, which would be an ideal time to get that fence in there. We are still working some of the areas, trying to get it stabilized. So if it could be a condition by final plat, I think that would be a little bit more amenable for us.
Thank you. Anybody else got questions? Okay, I'm going to open up the public hearing just for a brief period of time for any new items that have not been previously discussed. Anybody would like to address, please come up to the microphone, give us your name. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Jane, I live at 6567 George Street. I'd like to ask if there is going to be a stop sign at Shoal, because it is really dangerous. I've got run off the road twice there by trucks.
Stop sign at Shoal?
Yes, sir. Trucks are coming out of there and they have to turn. So if you're coming out of George Street, which on Turpin, literally, they're not stopping. They're, they're just going at, at, you know, a speed they shouldn't, but.
Is that something the city can do, Andy?
We'd have to look at the plans, but normally a stop sign would be required. Is it at, at the intersection of Shoal and Turpin? I would assume there's a, should be one required, but we could absolutely make that happen.
It's at, it's at County Road 6 right now, and so they come out of.
It's just a funny little intersection right there.
Yeah, it's a funky little V and, yeah, but.
Sure, we can absolutely make that happen.
Cool. And then there's a dumpster that they moved from the apart, the small apartments that they put on the corner, which is in that V, and they put up an, I don't know why they put it there, but when you are pulling up to the stop sign, you cannot see from that direction. You have to pull past the stop sign. So that needs to be either pulled back or taken from that corner, because you're going to end up with a pretty good wreck.
That's at the apartment side, is that?
Yes, sir, at the end of the little townhouses. That, that dumpster used to be at the backside of Shoal. Now they've moved it to the front and it's interfering with vision.
Right in that little triangle.
Yeah.
I saw it there and I didn't know.
Yeah.
Who owns the dumpster or who's renting them?
I'm assuming it's for the housing, but they moved it, so. Yeah.
But you know who it is?
Yeah.
So we can communicate?
We can take care of that, I'm sure.
Okay, and then, is the arborist here? No.
No, ma'am.
So I spoke to an arborist because they took down the five heritage trees. And he told me that it takes at least a tree three inches wide to gain root anywhere from seven to 15 years to keep the drainage under control. And I was reading in the Gulf Shores information about planning and zoning. There's major fines for taking those trees out. Have you applied that to anything? Because I haven't heard that mentioned in any meeting.
So as part of the original approval, the applicant gave us a tree survey, and they were allowed to take out certain trees to build the streets, infrastructure and things of that nature.
Correct, but they took out eight heritage.
Any additional trees that have been removed, they would have to remediate.
Okay.
If you want to tell me where the eight heritage trees were?
Not at this time, I mean, I, everything's.
If you want to, call me at a later, later time?
It was in a cul-de-sac that they changed.
Okay, those trees are in the process of being remediated. And there's a condition in, included in this approval that they have to remediate those. Remediation can be pay, either payment of a fee or planting of additional trees or a combination of both of them.
Okay, and then my last question is grading away from George Street and also the streets at the end of the block. Because when we had that rainfall just a few weeks ago, again, it's coming down George Street. It's going straight through my property. It's going through a neighbor's property. And it's because the slant is now headed more towards Brights Creek, which water follows the natural progression towards the creek. So I don't know if there, that has been addressed or not. Because somebody told me, I talked kindly to one of the guys, and he goes, it doesn't matter. So, yeah.
So we worked with the, the development team, and they're working to cut a swale in there to, to keep any drainage from flowing onto George Street. Between that and the BMPs, we shouldn't see that happening, so.
And I appreciate the fact that the fence goes up, because there are people coming from over there that are cutting through people's property on the other side of the street. So I appreciate y'all, thank you.
Thanks for your comments, ma'am. Thanks for your comments, ma'am. Anybody else?
Is there any realignment work planned for that intersection there at Shoal and Turpin? It seemed like I recall that, some of that rework of that intersection.
I believe there's a, there was a condition at preliminary plat approval that they had to realign that. And I know we've got some plans, I just don't, without looking at them, I don't know exactly what that is, but the developer could probably address that better than I can.
So that was part of our county road turnout permit. So there is intersection improvements there along Turpin Shoal and that alignment with the county road. So that work hasn't been, hasn't been performed yet, but it will be performed here shortly.
Okay, thank you. Okay, sir.
My name's Pat, I'm on the very end of Booney. I don't know, the map showed, I think it was number thirteen is what, where my property is. The very back end of my property, I'm going to call it the southeast corner. They've got what used to be Sanderson Road or whatever it is. It's up higher than my property in that corner. So any of the water that's coming down, it'll go directly into my property before it even gets a chance to go into their storm box that they put back there. I was just wondering if somebody could come out and shoot that grate again and either put a swell or, or something to keep the water from, you know, washing my property out.
What's your address, sir?
One eight nine seven four Booney.
We'll definitely take a look at that, thank you.
Okay. That's about it, thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, is that it, folks? Okay, ma'am, let's close the public hearing and the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve Z A two, five, twenty-nine with conditions. Bright Creek preliminary plat.
Second. Got a motion motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carried. Look. Okay, our next public hearing is Z A twenty-five, twenty-six, Rayleigh Farms, phases five and six preliminary subdivision plat. Andy, is that you?
Yes, sir, I'll, I'll allow a couple of minutes for the people to leave.
Thank you all for coming.
Good job, guys. Next application is Z A twenty-five, twenty-six, Rayleigh Farms, phases five and six preliminary subdivision plat. This is the last phases of Rayleigh Farms, the Rayleigh Farms development. I think most of you know where Rayleigh Farms is located, it's on Coastal Gateway Boulevard or the north side of Coastal Gateway Boulevard. And this phase will contain fifty-one single-family lots. If approved by the planning commission, preliminary subdivision plat allows the developer to obtain a land disturbance permit and construct Phase Five and Six of the subdivision. Location maps are on the screen. Again, this is the, or the proposed location is highlighted in blue. The current zoning of this property is conditional, R one, five, which is a single-family zoning district. We did notice this application as required by section four dash two of the subdivision regulations. We have not received any correspondence from the public notification. Background on this item, it was conditionally zoned from agricultural to R one, five zoning district back in twenty eighteen. Some of the conditions that affect this phase and all phases of development are there's some minimum lot sizes, lot widths required by the rezoning. The development density could not exceed three dwelling units per acre. That's for the overall development, it does not, it's like two point seven five dwelling units per acre. And then they were required to adopt similar covenants and restrictions as those at Stone Gate Estate subdivision, which all the other phases have complied with that requirement as well. And five and six will also comply with that requirement. Existing conditions, the total Rayleigh Farms is a hundred and sixty-two acres. Phases one, two and three are complete. Phase, Phase Four is under construction. This specific property contains no existing structures. It's heavily wooded with many protected inherited trees. The property contains approximately four acres of wetlands located at the northwest corner of the property. And it also, this phase contains a portion of the stormwater drainage ponds that are kind of located in the middle, middle of the development. Specifics of the proposed plat, you see the proposed plat on the right-hand side of the screen. It's twenty-three acres, fifty-one single-family lots, fifty lots in Phase Five, one lot in Phase Six. Dwelling units per acre is two point two. Minimum lot size is eight thousand four hundred square feet. That's determined by the conditional zone, zoning back in twenty eighteen. The lots ranging size from ninety-one hundred square feet to over sixteen thousand square feet. Minimum lot width is sixty-five feet in this phase. Setbacks, we'll get into this a little bit later, but they're proposing thirty feet front, thirty feet rear and five feet on the sides. They're basically, they're utilizing the conservation subdivision to preserve the wetlands as well as all of the heritage trees on the property. Therefore, they've asked to modify the setbacks. This phase has thirty, will be thirty-one percent open space. The minimum requirements of the subdivision regulations are ten percent. Again, the applicants worked with the city staff to preserve the four acres of wetlands as well as twenty heritage trees that are located on the property. The design will extend existing Kaylee Circle and the lots will kind of radiate off of Kaylee Circle. Kaylee Circle will be bisected by a new road called Britley Lane. And that, again, that's the proposed layout of the subdivision. Conservation subdivision is allowed by right in the R one, five zoning district. It allows a little bit of flexibility in terms of lot sizes, lot width setbacks in order to preserve the natural features of, of a subject parcel. In this instance, the natural features are again, the wetlands and the heritage trees. And the only thing that the applicant is asking for is a reduction of the thirty foot, thirty foot, a reduction of the front setback from forty feet to thirty feet and a reduction of the side yard setbacks from the required ten feet to five feet. And then photo on the, aerial photo on the right basically shows most of Phase Five. As you can see, it's densely wooded, you obviously can't tell the wetlands on this photo. Street plan, the streets will be within fifty feet wide rights of way. Ten-foot travel lanes, twenty-four inch mottable curbs, eight-foot wide landscape strip for the street trees. And then five feet sidewalks will be located at the property lines. Baldwin County E nine, one, one department, department has approved the street names and the streets are designed in accordance with the subdivision regulations. All the streets will contain five feet wide sidewalks. Those internal sidewalks will be connected to all the open spaces and a future pathway, pathway which will go around the ponds located on the property, which will also serve the existing swimming pool and most of the open space that are, that's within Rayleigh Farms. Again, this phase is proposed to be thirty-one percent open space. The open space is located in five different common areas, including the wetlands on the northwest portion of the property. Those wetlands are proposed to be preserved and they are being buffered by the required thirty feet natural buffer that's required in the wetland protection regulations. Pickleball courts will be added as an amenity with this phase of development. And those pickleball courts will be located in the central amenity area, which we'll talk about now. So when they originally proposed this subdivision, they kind of had to divide up or creatively divide up the open space between Phase One, Two, Three, Four and Five in order to comply with a ten percent open space requirements for each phase. Some of you will remember that. But what they wanted to do and what they've kind of achieved is a centralized open space, which will serve all of the lots within the subdivision. That centralized open space is located around the two lakes. The lakes also serve as retention areas, but if you've been out to the site, they are really nice big lakes. So those, that centralized open space in addition to the lakes, they protect, preserved in many live oaks, which are heritage live oaks and other protected trees in that area. There's large expanses of just natural open areas that are, that can be used for active recreation. There's also wetlands that can be used for passive recreation. There's an existing clubhouse and pool located on the property. Again, there's future pickleball courts proposed with this phase. And then there's sidewalks throughout the subdivision in front of, or on all streets. And those sidewalks will connect to the open space and amenity areas. Again, the responsibility of management of the open space will be the HOA Association. And the covenants and restrictions will, must be recorded and the recordation number placed on the subdivision plat when it's recorded. Drainage and utilities. The drainage plants have been reviewed and approved by the city engineering department. Basically, a little stormwater management plan, pipes, stormwater into the two large retention ponds. We have received utility letters from Baldwin EMC as well as Gulf Shores Utilities stating they can service this development and they've, the applicants also provided utility plans. Tree, tree preservation. Again, this phase contains twenty, twenty heritage oak trees. Eighteen of those are live oak trees ranging in size from twenty-four inches to sixty-one inches. One magnolia tree and one water oak tree. The applicant has designed the streets and lot layouts in a manner to preserve the existing trees. They've added a couple islands that go around some of those heritage trees so those will be preserved. They've also placed or laid out the lots in a manner so that the heritage trees will fall on the periphery of the lots and not like in the middle of the lot so that when a house is built, there will be a, hopefully be able to retain those heritage live oak trees. They've also added some common areas to places which weren't previously proposed out of common areas because there's been, there was one or two heritage trees located in those areas. For example, in the sixty-one inch live oak trees is placed, is placed in a common area so that will be preserved. Landscaping, the applicant did submit a landscape plan. Street trees are provided within the public rights of way every hundred feet on center. One thing that they do need to add is landscaping around the two stormwater ponds. Our regulations require three trees per hundred feet. We will count any existing trees that are located in that area, but in other areas where there are no trees, we'll have to need to update the landscape plans. Lighting, they propose Baldwin EMC light fixtures that will be similar to the remainder of the development. The lighting, proposed lighting complies with the minimum standards of the subdivision regulations. And with that, staff recommends approval of Rayleigh Farms Five and Six with the following conditions. One, prior to final subdivision plat approval, the proposed number of lots on sheet C one shall be updated to reflect the correct amount of lots proposed. Condition number two, prior to final subdivision plat approval, an electrical, electrical utility plan shall be provided from Baldwin EMC. Three, conduit for telecom broadband, broadband utilities shall be installed prior to final subdivision plat approval. Four, all heritage trees shall be preserved and protected during construction of the site. Five, prior to the issuance of a land disturbance permit, the western median within Kaylee Circle shall be enlarged to preserve the heritage tree. This is a change from what went out in our report. In, in our report, we say that both those circles shall be enlarged, but after speaking with the applicant's engineer, the northern circle is restricted because there are also heritage trees north and south of the circle. So if you expanded the circle, it would negatively impact those heritage trees. So we're just asking that the applicant, at this point, try to expand that western median a little bit. And we're, we're okay if it's just five feet, we're just trying our best to preserve that heritage tree located in the, the, the landscape island within the street. Six, the engineering department had several engineering comments. They need to make some adjustments on sheet C five regarding expansion joints. And then on sheet five dash one shall be updated to indicate subgrade improvements that extend two inches beyond the curb. Condition number seven, prior to final plat approval, the landscape plan shall be updated to indicate three trees every hundred feet around the stormwater ponds. Condition number eight, prior to final subdivision plat approval, the applicant shall install an eastbound left turn lane on Coastal Gateway Boulevard at Abigail Street. And then condition number nine, prior to the issuance of a land disturbance permit, the plan shall be redesigned to provide an eastward extension of Kaylee Circle to Oak Road East at Lot three thirty-three of Rayleigh Farms, Phase Four. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Andy.
Hold on, Jenny has one change.
Sorry, six B, that should extend two feet beyond the back of curb, not two inches. I think we just missed a little.
Makes a big difference.
Thanks, Jenny.
Okay, anybody up, commissioners have a, have any questions for Andy regarding this?
One question, and I appreciate all that's been accomplice through the cottage conservation plan and saving trees and that really, going to really enhance the neighborhood. Just had one question about the forty-foot front setback and if there was any way to maintain that and still accomplish. I mean, that was just an important thing we changed in the R one, five and being able to stack cars and keep them off sidewalks and the lots appear to be as deep as the, most of the others in the community that meet the front forty, but I know there were some concessions to save all the trees, but if there's any way we could maintain the forty-foot setback on the front, it, it would be nice.
Yes, sir, I would probably, the applicant would be better person to answer that question, but you are correct. The lots, the lot sizes in this phase are typically larger, I think, than the majority of the lots within Rayleigh Farms, the other phases of Rayleigh Farms, so. And the depths appear to be just as bigger, bigger, but the applicant could probably address that better than I can.
Is the applicant here today?
Also, same question, why, why the side yard setback reduction request? They're just adding additional lots?
They are not, they are not adding any additional lots through the conservation subdivision. I'll let the applicant answer it, but they, they are, they are not adding any additional lots.
Good afternoon, my name's Austin Lue, I'm with Engineering Design Group. So we've been working with staff, I guess, for the past few months on this Phase Five of Rayleigh Farms. And initially what we had, it wasn't actually based on the conservation subdivision, it was based on by right for the R one, five zoning. And then working with staff, obviously we have twenty heritage trees on the property and they asked us to take, go back and take a look and we actually redesigned this phase again to try to protect these trees as best we can and align the heritage trees on the property lines, add some additional common areas. And whenever we did that, we actually had larger lots originally for the houses that were planned to go in here. And whenever we started shifting lot lines around, they didn't quite fall in the right spots. As you can imagine, where the trees are going to be where the trees are. And so whenever we did that, we had to reduce some of the lot sizes. And therefore, with that, we asked for the setbacks per the conservation ordinance to reduce some of the setbacks to end up with a similar building area on these lots as we had in the original plan.
Could you not identify which specific lots and which specific trees and only ask for variance on specific lots instead of all sixty lots?
Right, and it is. Andy, if you have a site plan or something, you may be able to share.
Will that one work or do you need?
Do you have one?
Here we go. Is that better?
That's a little better, I don't know if they're going to be able to see that or not, but there are specific lots in here, I believe. Let's see, it's one, two, three, four, five, six. There's probably a dozen lots or so out of this where we are specifically asking for, I think those reductions is, is where the trees are located near their property lines. So where there's not a protected tree, we're not necessarily asking for that unless it's a reduction of the lot. Some of the lots are bigger than others, I guess, what I'm getting at, but where the lots are, we had to reduce them in size to work around the trees is where we were asking for it. So it's not every single lot, but there's a handful and I don't know exactly which ones right off the top of my head.
Because I think some of the plans that I reviewed had a star in a legend that said lot reduction, but then there I didn't see any stars on the individual lot. So I took it as you were requesting reductions on all the lots, but but yeah, if you could identify those lots, it obviously answered Mr. Mr. Brown's question.
Right, yeah, I think I know we did submit that to y'all with the asterisk. I just don't quite have it right here in front of me.
Yeah, that's that's fine.
And the front yard setback that Philip mentioned, going from same same situation or why why do you need that?
Very similar situation to where whenever we had to adjust some of the lot sizes to fit, we wanted to end up with a similar building area between the setbacks is what we had by right in the R one dash five.
So then Andy, is it possible for him for us to just do that for the lots that require it and not all of them? So that's my understanding is what the request is, is that correct, Austin? Is your only requesting the lot reductions on a handful of lots where they're existing heritage trees, is that correct?
Well, excuse me, my name is John Roberts, representing the ownership group. We're allowed sixty foot wide lots. What we went to sixty five to try to give the most flexibility to the end user. So in essence, it's an extra five foot there to begin with. So it's just for increased flexibility because we all know there's trees on a lot of the lots. We don't know exactly where on every particular lot, but it gives you a few feet to be able to move the house around on the end user. But we could switch it all back to sixty and add the ten. So it was just more for flexibility and also in the conservation subdivision, five foot is allowed by right. So we're just following the rules there. Same for the thirty. It's allowed in the conservation subdivision. So we're just following that path to save the most amount of trees. Thank you. Thank you.
So the conservation subdivision does allow for reductions in lot sizes, lot width setbacks. But obviously, the planning commission has to approve those reductions also.
So we approve as it go, I mean, once we know where the trees are, then we approve.
Well, it sounds like their request is thirty feet front, thirty feet rear and five feet side yard setbacks on the lots.
Okay, per the conservation ordinance.
Okay, I'll open up the public.
I have questions. I got two questions. The the open space with the wetlands, open spaces is more for staff. Do we? Have we in the past and do we always include the wetlands, open space towards total open space?
Yes. The way our ordinance is written, open space can be active or passive. The wetlands, even though they're not like basically passive is not really usable. So it would include wetlands.
Okay, so I don't think we should do that going forward, just my recommendation. And the reason is is because in meeting with a lot of the residents here, the open space, access to the open space and the amenities, their what their biggest challenge is the pool. There's not enough is not big enough, which we talked about when we were first passing this. It's really kind of not much larger than a pool that we would find in a backyard. So they're having that's, you know, that's their topic of discussion for the past couple of years for HOA. So the amenities that we're trying to we're putting here to accommodate this number of residents. It's just not substantial right now. It's not satisfying their needs. And the other reason is when we're talking about, you know, we're looking at building the park on County Road Eight and really the need for our public parks. I think if we stuck with the open space standards and not allowed our wetlands to be counted towards that, then we would have more amenities and more things like parks and green space within the subdivision. And people wouldn't have to have the need to depend on driving somewhere for the public space. And then the the other question I just have is on the outside of the fence. And this doesn't have to necessarily do with this phase five, but it does with the whole Riley Farms. As I was driving by there, every other subdivision, I think every other, but at least a large majority has trees outside the fence line. And so I was wondering why historically did we require that and why is Riley Farms the only one that I do not see trees? And the reason again I asked for that is the canopy is really great along those sidewalks. And then what we're having with the school, people being able to walk to school. And then it also that tree canopy narrows the line of sight, which improves the safety and lowers the speed of cars driving on County Road Eight, which has also been a request of the residents up there.
My only response to that is Riley Farms was the only subdivision that wasn't done by the city when they built Coastal Gateway. That's why it's not done. All the other subdivisions were done as a part of the coastal gateway improvement by the city. So the master plan showed it at Riley Farms, it's not there.
I don't understand that response.
I thought there was something also about dedicating ten feet of additional right of way that you guys did. There was there was something a little more to it. I'd have to go back and look, there is a reason why there are there are no, there is no landscaping there, though. But I I'd have to go back and look. It's I thought it had something to do with dedication of additional ten feet of right of way.
I think everybody dedicated ten feet along.
Maybe.
Yeah, Andy, I think you're right because I remember in the original zoning, that was part of the requirements was dedicating ten feet of additional right of way along the coastal gateway frontage. Because when Phase One, design of Phase One and even Phase Two had started, that was kind of right at the same time with whenever the city engineering department, they were doing that design. So I think that did have a lot to do with it.
I can speak to that probably, Andy, and Philip was involved in the conversations. We were asked to bring the property in to the city. And the city basically said, you give us the right of way and we're going to take care of the sidewalks and anything to do with coastal gateway, we're going to take care of it. And they did indeed landscape everybody except for ours. So good question why it's not done. But that was actually the city's responsibility.
Then in terms of your other questions, Commissioner Guthrie about open space, we are working on updating our subdivision regulations, hopefully next year. And open space will definitely be one of the things we're looking at because right now it basically it says ten percent of a subdivision active impact, it's got to be split between active and passive recreation.
There's not a percentage of each.
No, so there's not a lot in there right now.
Yeah, I believe that the for the additional right of way, we collected along there, the city did, was going to make those improvements. We had a egress, temporary driveway ingress and egress for Phase One and Two and maybe three that we knew was going to close off and move location to a permanent location. And I believe that's why we held off on those improvements till that was done. And then the applicant dedicated a north-south right of way to the city. And then I think for Phase Four, Phase Five, we improved that road so you could connect Phase Four to that road. So I think all those improvements were postponed until all that was done.
Till it was all secured location and?
That's correct.
What what's the timeline for the construction of proposed pickleball courts or other open space amenities? Do they have a certain time when they need to be completed prior to final subdivision?
Approval.
Okay, and is that in the document someplace? Because it just it just says proposed. Does that mean it's maybe going to happen or does that mean it's going to happen?
It's part of the it'll be a part of the final plat, I imagine.
You could add a condition if you wanted to. I don't think it's in the condition, but you could if you wanted to. The pickleball courts.
And the trail, the same thing, trail?
Yeah.
Is anybody else in the crowd like to ask any questions about this?
I do have one more question for the applicant. This came up while we were on our campaign trail out there. There were some residents that were still waiting on some wifi fiber or whatever. And I see that's a condition of this preliminary site plan that conduits have to be installed. So my question is, was there infrastructure in those previous phases for that? And do we have somebody committed to putting that infrastru? And maybe it's done now, that was a couple of months ago, but some folks still waiting. And so if there's some pressure you can apply or you've got folks, they they really do need some help with that.
It should be all in by now, point broadband, that's the conduit and the chase is in there, so.
Okay.
That was all done before final plat.
Right.
So I don't know why they didn't have the fiber in there.
Yeah, no, I know it's not your responsibility other than to put the infrastructure in there.
I will make sure, but I've talked to them on numerous occasions, I heard that myself.
Well, I hadn't had any more calls in the last month, so maybe maybe they got it working. Just wanted to ask while you were here.
What about the turn lane? I would like to address that as well because when we talked about the landscaping and every all the improvements, you was in the meeting with me and Robert was there. And we donated all this property. Everything on Coastal Gateway was supposed to done by the city. And y'all have honored that to this point, but I don't know why they didn't put the turn lane in. And we had a meeting with the city engineer at the time when they was building the road and asked that question. And they said, and he said that they were diverting them to Oak Road. They wanted the path of leak resistance to be Oak Road, and that's where they wanted to divert all the traffic.
Yeah, he's referring to a meeting when we asked our legislators to annex all of that area. We invited all of the property owners, tract owners that own land out there and development land to come in for, we had it in this room. We had a meeting in this room to talk about what the city would provide for a for a global annexation of that. And all the property owners agreed and therefore all our legislators agreed. But you're testing my memory to what was actually said. So I but but I do know, I mean, the city basically was going to put in the road. Now, whether each subdivision was responsible for any requirements for alone, traffic studies or we preprogrammed that, that's got to be in some documentation somewhere.
Turning lanes for every property down that road except for this one. And that and that's why I asked the question while they were building it.
Yeah.
And that's that was the answer I got. And I said, okay, that's what y'all going to do, that's what y'all going to do. But city said they was going to take care of all improvements on Coastal Gateway. And I took that to mean all improvements, I wasn't going to be working on Coastal Gateway.
I even have kind of written down here a little bit of the history behind that that may even draw a little bit of the memory because I know we had to go back because it's been seven years since we had begun. You know, and I think, you know, our request is really for recommendation eight and nine. The connection would be eight, add an additional connection to Oak Road. And then recommendation number nine was adding a left turn lane in the eastbound direction on Coastal Gateway. So kind of to back up a little bit in the history here, in the summer two thousand eighteen, there was a traffic consultant who he had wrote a analysis to the city engineering department at the time, basically saying what his recommendations were for this subdivision and how it connected to Coastal Gateway. And also at the time, that was when Coastal Gateway road plan was being thawed out and completed by the city. And so there was a lot of coordination there with the city engineer. And in the first zoning meeting that was had for this property, the commission at the time provided a recommendation or voted upon a recommendation which was provided by the city engineer to either have tapered entrances or right turn lane coming into the development. Working with the city engineer at the time, we ended up on the eastbound entrance into the entrance of Long Coastal Gateway, we put a fifty foot, a big wide sweep radius. If you've driven by there, you've probably seen that that radius is a lot bigger than what we typically would design anywhere else. And then after that meeting, we had the preliminary plat, Phase One meeting with planning commission. During that meeting, the city engineer at the time, actually, he made mention to Oak Road, the coordination with the developer. And then also basically he talked about the turning the big wide radius in that meeting and how we were working together with that. And so that was the recommendations that we had followed during design. Furthermore, going into the city council rezoning meeting, there was also mention made to how Oak Road was going to be connector in the master plan at the time because it was a big master plan showing access on to Coastal Gateway and one access on to Oak Road. And we actually did, engineering design group, our firm did the design of Oak Road. So we put in left turn lane at Oak Road or right turn lane at Oak Road and designed that because that was in working with the city engineering department, it was assumed that, hey, majority of Riley Farms is kind of east side loaded, north and south. There's not as much on the west side. So the thought was, hey, most of this traffic is going to be using Oak Road East as the main connection in and out of the subdivision. Also, for the preliminary plat of Phase Two, very similar, there was notations made in the meeting minutes about just the coordination consistent between Oak Road and the connections. And then in Phases Three and Four, there wasn't any mention about adding turn. Here we are now, we have fifty lots left to design the subdivision. And we're asked to provide a left turn lane and to provide an extra connection on the Oak Road. So we're just asking y'all for to remove that, just be fair and consistent with what we have done so far and the how we've been proceeding forward with the design. Sorry, that was up.
No, no, like, and I remember a lot of discussion about the alignment there, but we will have that on drawings and maps. That was under Mark Ackerman's tenure and he handled a lot of that work. So with my counsel hat on, I would say that if that's on that map and it was intended to be there, then it was intended to be put in when that intersection connection was done, which was at Phase Five and Six, which was a city planned improvement for that north-south connector. But it'll be on drawings somewhere, so I don't know if that item can get deferred. If we put them in for everybody else and that was intended to go to County Road Six, those maps are somewhere that can be found and I would think we could collect that information and I'm getting some eyeballs from Jenny over there, but I I think we all agree that now we see the traffic patterns in the left-hand turn coming from fifty nine. Something needs to be done there. And I mean, staff's doing their job making that recommendation. But I do think there might be some old history out there that we need to dig up.
So if we if we left it in the requirements and it proves contrary that the city was supposed to put it in, we could then step up and the city could do it and not force the developer to do it. But I'd hate to take it out now and then find out later that it wasn't required by the city or wasn't going to be put in by the city and not have it as part of the requirement.
So we've done quite a bit of research on the city side because I know this history of this project predates me by quite a while. The traffic study that we have on record is about seven years old and it showed that the majority of the traffic would use the Oak Road entrance. But what we're seeing in today's traffic patterns, that's not happening. And we've had a high accident rate and a near miss rate at the intersection there of the western intersection is and Hurst, Abigail, Abigail and Coastal Gateway Boulevard. So in in analyzing some of the newer traffic data and talking with our police department, it was a recommendation to add that left turn lane there, even though it was not a recommendation in the two thousand seventeen report. So but I also understand there's a lot of history to this project that predates me and a lot of decisions that were made. But we put this in as a staff recommendation because given today's current conditions, it's needed today.
Understood, and it may be something in the annexation agreement. I mean, all of that property out there was either in the county, unzoned or agricultural industrial type property. So there was a great benefit to the the city and the landowners for a global annexation, some master planning. And I know that road improvement plan was an incentive to get total annexation out there. But it's like I said, it's going to be, maybe it's in the annexation agreement, but I think we've worked well through the phases with this developer. They helped us put the new R one five into place when we revised R one five. They helped us put the new R15 into place when we revised R15, went back and changed their plans. We're in this final 50 lot phase here. We, they, they've worked well with us. So I, I mean, I, I think it will, everybody will do the right thing, but this, this commission may feel like they need to leave it in there based on staff recommendation. And we worked that out with the city and the finance department.
As long as we understand that, you know, we're gonna find out what the real history is and you know my stance because I was in here and I was here with you and y'all agreed to do everything on that road. That meant everything to me. Everything meant, you know, not part of it, but all of it. But y'all think we can work through it either way. It's not a deal killer. I just wanted everybody to understand the history.
Yeah, okay.
Then also the other, the other sticking point I was extending the fire, you wanted another road, I think, George out to. And when we put the temporary answer soon, you told me we needed two entrances and that was it.
For that phase, so you're adding 50 houses on 162 acres. You have several factors we looked at, it's a false in the fire code. But you have emergency traffic. So you have 162 acre subdivision, nothing wrong with it, but you're adding 50 homes. You have two access ingress points. So travel through the neighborhoods of emergency vehicle, there's more of that. There's also delay in emergency vehicle access to the new 50, top of the five and six phase. Alls we're asking is to flip the engineer, Jenny had an idea, would be flip, so you don't lose any lots. Flip the lots up and just extend it a block to, that was the top. But it's basically for improved safety for the occupants.
I hear what you're saying. I guess when we met out there, this has been going on for years. So I, I thought I known that when we went into this, you know, going, because this thing's been master planned for years. It's not a surprise to anybody.
If, if we're gonna, if we're gonna land on this thesis that, that Oak Road north corridor or is the primary, it would make more sense to allow that top area, that neighborhood to get to that and not have to come back through the neighborhood to, as an access point that maybe doesn't have left-hand turn lane. And I, I think there's a plan there where you don't lose any lots.
Yeah, I agree with that, but how long is it gonna be for Oak Road's extending down through there? Y'all got a plan for that? I mean, we're talking to Foley now, giving them easements.
No, this, this is kind of a, a future, this is prepping us for the future because at one time we thought we had that connection worked out, land ownership changed north of you. And now we don't at this point, but it's part of our master street plan to have that connector.
The thing we're working on with Foley now to give part of our land to get that easement through there. So, so you're saying if Foley goes, you'll go more than likely.
I'm saying it's gotta be a joint effort and so there's not, it's not only, it's not on the priority list today to pave that road, but it will be at some point. And at that point, you're gonna want that connector there.
Andy, I guess I have a question about that. If, you know, we already have the preliminary plat approval for phase four. So if we're gonna go in and change, it's gonna reconfigure. I mean, the only way I can think that it works is if that road runs east and west, we turn those lots where the road would go through and turn them north and south. So is that something that we can handle in the final plat of phase four? I know we're getting off topic on what we're discussing.
Yeah, yes, sir.
It's all relative.
A minor change like that we could easily handle, yes.
I do have, I guess, a couple of other things. Andy, I know you mentioned the tree islands. I think we had spoken with you, or engineer from our office spoke with you this morning about that. Those islands, I know y'all mentioned for them to be wider. The width of them and the largest part is about 24 feet and the length of them, I think it's 78 feet. So they're pretty good size and per the ordinance, we had to have five feet outside of the tree to protect it. So essentially, we're gonna have roughly 11, 10, 11 feet outside of those trees in what we have now. So we're probably about double what the ordinance requires and just trying to save those trees. So I just want to make sure that we're good with that.
So we removed, you have two islands after I spoke with, is it Joe?
Joe, yeah.
The northern island, in addition to the tree in the middle of the island, there are two trees directly north of it, outside the street, one heritage tree, south of it, outside of the street. He explained if you expand to that at all, then you would get into destroying those trees. So I said, that's fine. As a recommendation is, it's just to try to expand that western island. I mean, a couple of feet if you can.
Okay.
Just, we just want us to preserve the trees and we're not talking about let's plan it by 30 feet or whatever. We're just, we're just trying to work with you guys to save these trees. Because obviously if they're located in the middle of the street, that's gonna be a challenge period. So that's, that's all we're asking.
Okay, I was, it wasn't super clear, so I just wanted to make sure, whenever you say wider, what that means. But we'll take a look at it.
That's all we're asking is just try to work with us. I mean, if it's two or three feet, that's better than what we have today.
Gotcha, okay. The other thing is, the nor, northern side of the large lake on the west and on the western side, there's a bunch of wetlands and there's a bunch of existing vegetation. We would like to ask in some places where the existing tree line kind of comes close to that pond, we wouldn't, we'd like to work with staff and not tear down trees just to go plant new trees back, if we could do that. And then also.
That's absolutely fine.
Also, since we are doing the tree conservation subdivision and we're saving 20 heritage trees as part of the subdivision, we'd like to ask if there's a way we can get some sort of tree credit in the area around the pond where we're having proposed trees every 100 feet, since we're saving 20 heritage trees.
I mean, this zoning ordinance has a section in there for preserving trees. It's just not in the subdivision regulations. So it's a little.
Can you pull up the slide that says conservation easement? It's just one of your slides.
Yeah, see.
So the staff is asking for three trees every 100 feet. It's the one that's with.
Wait, sorry.
Aerial. So this is what we're talking about, adding three trees every 100 feet around. We have, you know, 100-foot trees and we're talking about planting a little tree 10 feet away from it.
I mean, if, if you, like I said in the staff, if you have existing trees located around the pond, we're not gonna, we're not gonna make you plant more. That's right. So if it's a bare area, kind of like you've done, I think on the smaller pond, you've kind of ringed it with trees because there's nothing out there.
In that scares you, you know, leaving that in scares you because you're like, is this 90 trees or 12, you know? It's a big, big difference.
I hear what Andy's saying. You don't go out and work with us.
You'll work with us. That's all we're asking.
Absolutely, I'll work with you.
It's mostly gonna be on the south side instead of 80% of the circle. And you want the, the lot, the, the thing that's extended for the fire department is just land. It can't be accessed for an unknown period of time. That's what we're saying, for the third access. So I don't think in, in any way it helps the fire department. I mean, it's just. Well, right now it's accessible to an easement. Yeah, there's no road there.
It will be accessible in the future, George, when the road's built.
Okay, so I just want to be clear that we're putting that in for no reason temporarily.
Okay, Mel, we will close the public hearing and chair will entertain a motion.
I need some clarification on something.
Yes, sir.
The pickleball court and the trail system, what was the timeline on that again?
Final plat approval.
Final plat approval, yeah.
But it's not actually written in any particular. Is that possible to get done immediately for these residents? Around the pond, the trail around the pond, that pickleball court, it doesn't look to be in the way of construction. Those folks that have been living out there have been waiting a long time to, to be able to run around that trail or run around that pond. Is that something possible y'all can get done?
This phase, they'll be able to walk away around the second pond, the eastern pond.
Doesn't complete around the large pond on the west?
The small one.
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to know the answer to turn lanes and other stuff like that. These are not small dollars.
Well, we can defer it. So we can get all these answers for them.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to know if we have to put a turn lane in. I'd like to know if we have to plant 100 trees.
But no, the water trail goes around the eastern pond on this phase and then all other, everything else is finished on phase four.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve with the staff recommendations with one change of two inches becoming two feet in item number six.
Six B.
And adding a number 10, that the common amenities, including the trail around the upper and lower detention lakes and pickleball courts be complete prior to final plat.
Do you wanna, do you wanna add in there a condition of revisiting the annexation history to determine the responsibility of the turn lanes to city or the developer?
Yes. So 11 will be.
You could just revise.
Add it to number eight.
Yeah, add it to number eight.
Add it to number eight, okay.
To make sure that it's either on the city or on the, or it's not on the city already as a, as a requirement.
Yeah, thank you. All right, you want to repeat your motion?
So approve with the staff recommendations, modifying six to be feet instead of inches, modifying eight to do the research from the city's perspective related to the annexation and the relevance to the turn lane. And 10, a new, a new requirement that all the common amenities, common amenities, including the trail around the upper and lower detention lakes and the pickleball courts be completed prior to final plat.
I can take it, Pat.
First, yeah, finally in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, gentlemen.
Thank you, George, big love.
Good luck. Okay, our next item is Edwin Oaks subdivision, ZA 2522. Andy?
Yes, sir. This is the application, ZA 2522, Edwin Oaks subdivision, supplementary subdivision plat. Similar to the last application, if this preliminary subdivision plat is approved, it will allow the developer to obtain a land disturbance permit and construct the improvements associated with this subdivision. So the applicant proposes to subdivide 2.47 acres into seven single-family lots. The property is located on state highway 180 west, directly west of Mo's Landing City Park. Here's the photographs of the existing conditions. This property is currently wooded. It's currently subdivided into four individual lots and its own neighborhood business. Has a lot of beautiful live oak trees on the property. Location maps, again, it's on state highway 180 west, directly west of Mo's Landing and its own neighborhood business. We did notice this application as required by the subdivision regulations. We have not heard from any of the surrounding property owners. BN zoning is a most restrictive commercial zoning district. It's, a lot of times it's used to provide a transition between existing residential and proposed commercial uses. It does allow single-family houses by right and the applicant is proposing single-family houses here. So again, here's on the diagram on the right-hand side of the screen shows the proposed subdivision plat, seven single-family lots. They will run from the property line, this doesn't clearly show it, but from the northern property line to the southern property line on the Little Lagoon. They'll all be accessed from a brick paver pervious driveway. The proposed lots are substantially larger than the minimum lot size. They are slightly larger than the minimum lot widths and they will comply with a minimum lot setback standards in the BN zoning district. Open space is not applicable to this development because our subdivision regulations, I believe it's anything less than 25 lots does not have to provide open space. And these lots will be much like any of the single-family lots that majority of the people live on. They'll have open space on the individual lots. It will be large enough to handle a house and some open spaces. Landscaping and tree preservation, as I previously spoke about, there are six, there are many protected trees on this property, but six heritage live oaks on the property, the largest has a DBH of 52 inches. It's a beautiful live oak tree. There are four additional heritage live oak trees located between the property and state highway 180. As you all know, there's probably at least 150 feet of property that's owned by the Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources between the actual road and the northern boundary of this property. So there's a lot of, a lot of protected and a few heritage trees located in that area also. The applicant has designed the entry road to avoid all the heritage trees and as many protected trees as possible. And there is no landscaping required on this subdivision because of the lots, the way the lots are laid out. They all front on highway 180 and our subdivision regulations do not require any frontage landscaping there. Subdivision drainage, because they are utilizing pervious brick paving, there is no drainage plan required. At the time of a building permit for these houses, the applicant will have to supply an individual lot grading plan that will be reviewed by the engineering department. Wetlands, there is a small sliver of wetlands located along the shoreline, northern shoreline of the Little Lagoon. It's about 733 square feet. They are proposing to buffer the wetlands with a 30 feet of natural area as required. They are also proposing to place the wetlands in a conservation easement, but they would like to plat the wetlands on individual lots. Our wetland protection regulations do not allow the plating of wetlands on individual, single, new single-family lots. So that will require city council approval in order to do that. And with that, staff recommends approval of the preliminary subdivision plat with the following conditions. Number one, an ALDOT turnout permit shall be approved and provided to the city prior to construction of the driveway connection to state highway 180 west. All heritage oak trees shall be preserved and protected on the property. Number three, a wetland waiver shall be approved by the city council prior to issuance of a land disturbance permit. Number four, prior to subdivision plat approval, the following items shall be addressed. A certificate referencing the recording instrument of the subdivision covenants and restrictions shall be provided on the plat. B, signs indicating the 30-foot wetland buffer shall be installed on the property. C, all underground work for cable, TV conduits and appurtenances for future service connections shall be installed. D, the rear building setback shall be removed from the civil plans. The rear, rear building setback will be the wetland buffer line. And then A, I mean E, a fire hydrant shall be placed closer to the homes if possible. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Andy, that, there's an easement there right in front of these lots, on the northern side of these lots, right? It runs all the way down. Is that just a state highway easement or what is it?
Conservation easement. Yes, there's the Conservation and Natural Resources owns, I think, a 330-foot wide piece of property kind of around.
How far does it go?
The roadway to the end, all the way to the end.
Way.
Yeah, the ALDOTs, the right-of-way is within that property.
Okay. Okay, anybody up here have any questions for Andy? Is the developer here? Identify yourself, sir. Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Chris Lee with Leeve Engineering Company. I'm here on behalf of the developer. I'll be glad to answer any questions on your behalf.
Anybody have any questions for the developer here? Anybody have any questions for the developer here?
I think you've covered pretty well. Pretty, covered pretty well in here.
Okay, pretty simple. Let me, let me open up.
Is the, the rear setback is the water side, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So is it still, it's thirty, the house setback is still thirty feet from the wetland line? Is that what it is?
So I believe that Andy recommended the rear setback line be that thirty-foot wetland buffer.
So basically on the rear setback is shown on the plat. So on, on the plat, it just states the building setback shall be as required at the time of, as required by the zoning at the time of building permit. There's no need to necessarily show it on the civil plan, so we just have them, usually have them remove it. And the reason we don't show the setbacks on the recorded plat and, and include that note is we've had subdivisions over time. They got approved showing setbacks, the zoning gets changed. Then the setbacks are, on the plat are different than the zoning, and we always have to contact the city attorney which ones prevails.
Right.
So at this point, we just say, put a note on the plat. Says setback shall be required as required by the zoning in place at the time of building permit. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Hopefully.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. Now, we'll open up the public hearing. Anybody in the audience who would like to address this? Edwin Oak subdivision. All right, don't rush up to the one. We'll close the public hearing and then the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve ZA two-five, twenty-two.
Second. I've got a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Including staff recommendation.
Yes.
Including staff recommendation, yes.
Okay, ZTA twenty-five, oh-six, vacation rental signs, zoning text amendment. Looks like Scott's got this one. Give Andy a break.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So the next item is a discussion and consideration for a zoning text amendment pertaining to vacation rental signs. If you recall, a few months back, the planning commission heard some discussion on sign updates. That was mainly about bringing our entire sign ordinance into compliance with the First Amendment. So, so signs now in Gulf shores, or really anywhere, but in Gulf shores, they are not regulated based on the content or the viewpoint of the message. So we, we may term sign certain way, but, but the message is not what's being regulated. Here today, this is discussing actually the, the size, manner, location of signs, particularly for vacation rental units. So, and, and this has come to us based on complaints we've received and concerns. We've heard about sign litter, if you will. So this is a, an image from, this is, actually I took it back in May, but this is standing on West Beach, facing west. You know, typical, typical scene here in Gulf shores. Just within this image, there are seventeen freestanding or detached signs, most of them pertaining to vacation rentals. And again, the, the, what's bringing this to us is the concerns we hear from the community elected officials, appointed officials regarding just the, the number and frequency of signs. So the proposal is, well, for one, we're, we're utilizing a common term. Someplace in the ordinance that talks about like tourist rentals, so we are just changing all of, just say vacation rental dwelling units. So that's, that's part of it. And then just, this is really already in the ordinance, but just clarifying where vacation rentals may take place, short-term rentals, if you will. So within that single-family duplex vacation rental overlay district, that's all single-family with the overlay that allows the short-term rentals. Within BN, BG, BT, so neighborhood business, general business and tourist business, as well as ICW North and South. Also in PEDs that have multifamilies that were specifically designated for vacation rentals. And then the, the council may further approve some multifamily developments in our three, our four zones, their CUP. And, and it specifies where they're prohibited. In other words, they're prohibited where they're not allowed, but that's the list of where they're not allowed. This map just shows that vacation rental overlay district, so the mostly West Beach, West Lagoon and a portion of highway one eighty west. All the underlying zoning there is gonna be some variety of R-one or R-two. So the, the real noticeable changes here are the proposals of what signs may be allowed in the vaca, where there's a vacation rental dwelling unit. I do wanna point out that this will pertain to the units themselves. So if you have a one, single house, these apply. If you have a duplex, they apply per unit, so you would have times two. Or if you have more than that, more, more dwelling units than that. So the, the first requirement, this is actually a requirement of the building code, residential code, but all the units must display their address numbers. I believe the residential code or the IBC requires a minimum of four inches. We are limiting to eight inches in height, no more than thirty-six inches in, in width visible from the roadway. And if it's a Gulf side or Gulf facing lot, there's some additional requirements within the code of ordinances, I believe both in the fire code and the building code. They require some additional address characters on the Gulf sides. One identification sign mounted flat onto the facade of the, of the structure of the dwelling unit, up to six square feet. Now, it does say may not be directly illuminated. Directly illuminated is not a very good term. Really what that probably should be is internally illuminated, but that's, that's talking about like these cabinet signs that, that like you see on the storefront, that may be plastic with a rear light. So that's how we currently define directly illuminated. So vacation rental signs, they can't do that. They can be illuminated with like a gooseneck or some kind of a, you know, uplighting, but they just can't be a internally lit cabinet.
Lighted sign.
The next item is each dwelling unit may have a nameplate sign, again mounted flat to the facade of the dwelling unit, up to two square feet. And then on Gulf front lots, one fence or detached sign may be allowed on either side of the building itself. So the idea here is, again, we don't regulate the message or the content of the, of the signage, but these we typically are see signage that may say no public access, no trespassing, things like that. Cause a lot of times you'll see those accesses on the either side of the buildings. So that's kind of the idea of them. Again, they can put any message they want on the sign, but that's, that's what those are for. These are the prohibited signs, sniper window signs, and all other fence or detached signs are prohibited. And then this has always been the rule, but we just clarified that signs may not be installed in or over the public roadway or a public easement. So here's my wonderful graphic here. So this is just for a single unit, so the address number. Again, you can put whatever, but typically that's, well, actually no, we do require the address number on, on these. The identification signs are the six square foot signs that would be installed directly onto the front facade of the structure. And the nameplate sign is a two-square-foot sign that could be on the, on the facade of the structure. And then the detached signs for Gulf side lots. Again, the, these, so these are the allowable signs for a single unit dwelling vacation rental unit. And then if, say this is one's a duplex, it would get one per, one of these signs per dwelling unit. So it would essentially double up. Again, the, this would be a recommendation to the city council, and the city council would be the ones who make the final vote on it. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know I've shared some of this with some of our local vacation rental providers. So this will have to have a public hearing, so I imagine some of them may wanna speak and have questions, and I'm happy to entertain any of those.
Got it. All right. Banner signs allowed. I noticed a, I noticed a house on West Hurst Avenue had a big banner sign on it.
Not under this particular proposed language. I think we do for certain events on commercial. I don't wanna tell you the wrong thing, but.
Okay.
Normally banners are not allowed. Only through a permit, so it could be something.
Yes, permitted, yeah.
You have permitted or not permitted? Check it out, you want to.
Anybody have questions here for Scott?
I think just a comment. I'd go ahead and suggest that we go ahead and change that wording about the change from directly illuminated to internally illuminated now, if they're trying to clarify it.
Well, the problem is, is that's, that's a defined term in the, and it's used elsewhere in the zoning ordinance. So I had to change it everywhere, which is a good idea, cause I don't like that term. It's confusing, but it would just turn this into a much bigger amendment, cause I would have to every, every time it's changed. If and when we re-raise zoning, we will certainly do that, cause that's a very, I don't like that term, so. But yeah, it's, it's a defined term, unfortunately.
For the, I have a question. For the six-foot identification sign, is there location on where that sign goes?
Just the front facade, mounted flat on the front side facade of the building. So it can't be freestanding, it would just have to be on the structure.
Okay.
Six square.
Anybody else? Anybody else?
Right, so two foot by three foot, one foot by six foot, or whatever combination you want.
Okay, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Anyone like to, sir?
Yeah, Brian Harris with Harris Vacations. We've been management company in the market for a long time.
Yes, sir.
I think that not having signs on a post that people can see, you know, clearly while they're driving down the road and having to look ninety degrees to the side to try to find the house sign they're looking for could be a, a real safety hazard. I think if there's an issue with where the signs are as far as close to the road, then I think that, you know, there's already regulations on that. We're doing, we don't understand what the issue is that we're trying to solve, I guess. Like, there are a lot of vacation signs on West Beach because there are a lot of vacation rentals. But I think going to signs directly on the building is not the right move.
Well, so, well, the, the, what was sent to us to consider was just the numerous signs out there. Now, I'll admit, probably many of them are on the right ways, so they're technically not allowed as is, but, you know, that, that's what was sent to us, is just the, the numerous detached signs that are out there right along West Beach and, and other streets.
Yeah, and there, there are a lot of detached signs, but there are a lot of vacation rentals. And I think that a sign in front of your vacation rental house telling somebody from Oklahoma, this is at least the company that you rented from, and this is probably the house that I'm looking for as I, you know, go down the road, and I got Waze telling me where it is. I think that it, if you've got people looking, you know, to the side, trying to find their house, their sign, they're not looking at the road. I think that's gonna cause a lot of safety issues. People turning, people, you know, moving over, people missing the house, pulling in a house, backing out, going back. You're gonna cause a lot of problems. And if the issue is where are the signs, then we've already got regulations on that. There's no need for new regulations.
Sounds like the issue is the littering, is the aesthetic, that the, all the signs are not, it looks like litter. That's, that's what, am I understanding that correct?
Is that what we're trying to do?
Yeah, so when you're asking about what's the intention.
Is the volume of signs we're trying to get rid of, or what are we trying to do actually?
Well, I think it's company, I think it, like Commissioner Guthrie said, I think a lot of it is aesthetics, it's the volume, it's the closeness to the road. So I mean, it's aesthetics, it's public safety, so yes, to all those questions.
Cause he's got a good point, you know.
I mean, I think the power poles are not attractive, but we gotta have those, right? Like, there's just some things we have to have. I also think that, I mean, we talked on the phone, Scott, about, I think one of the regulations was one sign per, right? And I think there needs to be at least some acknowledgement that you might have a vacation rental that also goes up for sale. And now we do have a cause for having, you know, two signs on the property. I know we have one that's managed by Harris Vacations with a sign and up for sale by England Volkers, which is a sister company, and there's a sign there too. I think that having regulations on signs is appropriate, but I think we already have regulations on signs that we're not enforcing. And instead of just enforcing the, the regulations we already have, we're kinda going an overshot to take out all signs and put them on, on the building. And I just don't think that from a safety standpoint is a good idea. For pedestrians, for people that aren't from here, that are looking for their property, I just don't think it's a good idea.
Do you think, are, are you concerned at all with the business impact?
I think it's gonna have a business impact. I think it's gonna have a safety impact more than a business impact. I mean, ultimately, people are gonna find these houses on, you know, online, Airbnb, wherever, they're gonna book them and they're gonna come down here. And eventually they will find them, right? But did they find them because they've been staring left or right out as they drive down West Beach Boulevard, veering into the, the, the bike lanes and the pedestrian lanes? That's what I'm worried about. We've already had people getting killed on West Beach Boulevard. We don't need people looking off the road.
Yeah, are they, but if they, if they, they go online and they book eight fifty-one West Beach Boulevard, Waze is sending them. The house numbers are on the houses already, so I mean, we're not, we're not putting addresses on these.
Well, we do.
Signs.
You're not required to, but we always do. We put the name of the house, right? I booked, you know, Sandy Toes with Harris Vacations, and it's one-one-five. So we've got Harris Vacation Sign, Sandy Toes, one-one-five. Right? I mean, we're trying to make it as easy to find as possible. And then you've got, and if you're riding, y'all, when y'all go home, you know, ride down the road, start looking to your left for twenty seconds and look to your right for twenty seconds, and did you stay in the middle, or did you start? You know, you're gonna start swerving. That's just the way it goes. From a safety standpoint, it's not a good idea.
I think some of the goal here is kind of a continuation of the enhancements of that beach district as we started with the leave-only footprints and cleaning up the beach and doing that. And then just as we have recently done with managing trash receptacles where they're not out for two days, a day before and a day after, and then they're, and so just as you drive through the beach area between trash cans and signs and it's a, it's a, it's, it's pretty cluttered, it's a pretty cluttered environment. So I think some of that initiative is to, how, how do we, how do we identify properties? How do we help the businesses, but how do we clean up this street scape in here?
Would, yeah, that's a good point. Would you be, would you be more on the side of consistency with the signs, that they're, the post signs?
For sure.
If everyone was on the same playing field, what was on that sign? Cause right now you get down there and there's sixteen different signs, sixteen different ways that people are doing it. With the address, with the name, the writers, some have writers, some don't have writers. I think that's kinda junks it up a little bit too.
I mean, I, and, you know, Jeff's here, they have great signs. They literally just rebranded. He's got a great-looking brand. He doesn't put the writer with the name and the, and the address number. Is that wrong? I don't think it's wrong. It's just what he's chosen to do in his brand, and we've chosen to do a different thing in our brand. If you're saying signs are okay and, and house placards are okay, I'm not sure why they're not okay on the, I, I just don't think it is that much more disruptive visually to have a sign with a writer, especially when the writer's given the name and the address codes. Again, the guy driving the fire truck is looking for one-one-five. If it's on the sign, that helps him out.
That's what I'm saying. It's inconsistent with some have it on the sign, some don't.
Well, I mean, I guess if you wanted to have us put the, you know, the name of the property and the number, and we're already doing that, so I'd be fine with that.
We can't dictate what goes on a sign. That's part of the first.
Yeah, we had to be careful.
That's how all this started.
Okay.
So we can't dictate what goes on a sign, and I think to just kinda consensus here that everyone's looking for some consistency and some cleanup on the beach.
I think one thing that would clean it up is if they were all basically the same distance away from the road. Right? And there's, either there's no regulation on that, or there's no enforcement of the regulation on that. Right? I've got one here, I've got one here, I've got one here, and that does tend to clutter it up, right? If all the mailboxes were. If all the mailboxes were, you know, 10 feet variance back and forth, it would look a lot more cluttered.
I think you've also got, when you're talking about consistency and the branding, you're, I mean, the majority of those are advertisements, right? So it's, you know, there's a directional purpose, but it's an advertisement for, I like that house. I want to rent it next time. And that's where the inconsistency comes, inconsistency comes in. And it looks like advertisement after advertisement after advertisement. So that's the aesthetic of it as well, is the inconsistency. In branding as well as the inconsistency and what's on them as well as the distance. So it's more than just the distance. It's, it's advertising. So we're allowing advertising every house on the, on the West Beach.
I think most drivers, new drivers down there got the address in their GPS to find where the house is. They're not looking for Harris or whatever. They're looking for eight fifty-one West Beach on the GPS. That's what I'm thinking.
Sure.
Your name is Jeff Faberino. I've been here 20 years, for those of you who don't know me. So Gulf Shores Vacation Rentals. Um, the, the, the picture you showed was a great picture of West Beach that is east of the pass. These are 50 foot lots that is by design. That's what's ordained says, and it's 50 foot lots. So of course you're going to have more clutter and more signs in a, in a smaller area because it's 50 foot lots. When you get to the west of the pass, 2,000 block all the way down to 3,200 block, those are 100 foot lots. So there's much more distance between the lots. So take a picture down there and you're not going to see that same clutter. This is also an overlay district. It's called the business overlay district. It was actually created because of the problem that existed. And the council at the time, I think, did a great job was R1 and R1A zoning said the same thing. Whether you're on the beach or you're in craft farms, and it said you cannot have a business. So they created an overlay district. So this is a business district, right? And that's what's there. These are businesses that are operating. And yes, of course they have signs. Now, I, I'm agreeing with Brian. Yeah, um, make it, may have some consistency there, but, but of course you're going to have a telephone number. And of course you're going to have a website because if they cannot find you for whatever reason, what else are they going to do but to call? So you can call that advertising if you'd like, but I just think that's information. And, and if you're telling us we can't put that on it, and all we can put is our, our name, again, I think it's a disservice to the business. That's what we're there. And by the way, there's hundreds, there's millions of dollars being paid by the, the vacation rental, you know, companies down here to the city, you know, for the pleasure of being, you know, in business down here. The other thing is when you showed that picture, right, when you showed, here's a sign of the name of the sign, you, you showed it, it, it's not reflective of the, of the actual size. That house is a 30 foot wide house. Each side is 15 feet. What you showed was a sign that's basically nine feet wide when you put that up there. A three, a two by three sign, you cannot see it from the road. If you're on a 100 foot lot, you're 150 feet off the road. When it's dark down there, if you've ever driven down there, you cannot even see the houses from the road. So if you put a sign and you move it off the road, you can't even see the sign. So that, that's really the concern that I have is when you get farther down the beach, there's no way to see these houses. You cannot see them. Even with the illumination, you cannot see the sign. You can't see the address. The address is this big. From 150 feet away, you can't see that. So.
Well, the, the, the address numbers are already there and that's, I mean.
No, I understand. But that's one of the reasons why I think that Brian, and, and he puts, he puts the number on the sign because as you're driving, you can actually see the number on the sign and, and you cannot, because you can't see it from the road.
Yeah.
So, so I mean, I, again, I'm, I'm in agreement that let's, you know, the, the ordinance says where the signs should be placed. And I think they're probably not being enforced, right? There, there's some that are in the easement. There's some that are not in the easement. And, and so you get these signs that are doing like this down the road. When I, when I moved here 20 years ago, the signs were exactly, there were actually more signs on, on, in front, down West Beach than there are today. And then the storms happened and all that kind of stuff. So we're maybe back to where we were 20 years ago. So I, I'm with Brian. I'm with Brian. I don't quite understand what we're trying to achieve here. But I'm telling you, if you move these signs to the house, houses, especially when you get to the 2,000 block and farther, you will not be able to see these signs in the road. Cannot. Not on, not on the sides that you're talking about. Cannot.
Those lots are deeper. The houses sit way further off the road. I understand that. We understand. We're not regulating what goes on them. You mentioned tags and website. We're not regulating the information you put on there. But back to a safety concern, if we have websites and phone numbers and agent, and they're trying to read all that, that really is a, a safety concern.
No, I get it.
More information we're trying to get across to them on a sign as they're driving 35 miles an hour down the beach.
Yeah, I mean, if we want to get that beach safe, let's make sidewalks down there. Why aren't we doing sidewalks on West Beach? That'll actually make it safer because right now it's a right away. The person that was killed was actually in my house that was killed on West Beach. And they were walking where they were supposed to be walking and a drunk driver ran them over. So if they're on a sidewalk, they're probably alive today. So if you want to make the beach safer, let's put sidewalks down there. And, and with the, with the way the driveways are, you're really only talking about putting 20 feet of sidewalk between each one of the driveways to actually make them contiguous. So you want to make the beach safer, let's put sidewalks up.
Well, I wouldn't, I wasn't recommending.
No, no, I'd recommend.
The sign ordinance makes it safer one way or the other. I'm just saying, the more information you ask somebody to read, the longer they're going to look at it.
Yeah, I kind of think the safety, I, I just, I don't know how much I agree with the safety argument. I, I would tend to lean towards the one, understanding the business impact because the safety, you've got GPS, you know exactly where you're going to turn. And I drive down there all the time looking, you know.
I, 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 I guess I, I disagree slightly. These, these things are not perfect. We've, we have people who do not show up the right houses and they've got them in ways.
Right, but if you're, if you're, if you can't find, I guess the, if you can't find the house, then you're not in front of the sign to call. So that argument to me doesn't make sense because you're not there. So you're going to look, you're going to pull over, look on your phone and your reservation or call the Gulf Shores rental.
His sign and a sign, if I choose to actually put a number on the sign that's in the, that's, that's where it's supposed to be, 30 feet off the road, it does have a number on it.
Right, but if you went past it, you're, you don't, if you're saying that they couldn't find where they're going, then they, they can't find the sign that you're looking.
Seventeen twenty-one, seventeen twenty-five, seventeen twenty-nine, seventeen thirty-one.
You're saying the number, you're saying house numbers towards the road.
Correct, correct, yeah. So if you have a, if you have a number on the sign, then the house, because you cannot see the house numbers from the road. Even in the West Beach part that, that the houses are only, whatever that is, 60 feet off the road. You cannot see that, you can't see the signs. You cannot see the numbers on, on the houses. Uh, we, we considered, and we considered actually putting signs on the face of the houses long ago, but we didn't be, because you cannot see them from the road. You, you just, you can't identify the houses. That, that's, to me, that's a problem. I mean, so I want to clarify another thing. So we have a couple of owners who they love their houses and they've done some custom stuff in front of the house. Like on, in the 2,000 block and deep, 150 foot lot deep, like deep lots, right? One of them put, it looks like a, um, sand beach chair, like at the back of a chair. And they put their name of the house on that. And it's pretty big. It's, you know, and stands this tall. Under this ordinance, that would not be allowed, correct?
Is that attached to the house or is it just kind of a free?
It's, it's, it's in the yard behind the easement. Yeah.
Yeah, as, as the written proposed language, no, it would not.
I mean, I'm just, I'm clarifying that.
Right. In a, in a single family zone.
By the way, I'll just, for the record.
What's that address?
Gulf Shores Rentals.
Exactly, yeah.
If, if we're looking to unify the signs, what information, the house number for sure. Um, what, you know, is there a minimum amount of information?
Yeah, please, sorry.
Um, I think the, the biggest thing would be if we're trying to unify it, right? Let's unify where they are, right? I think that's the biggest issue because you've got.
That wasn't my question.
Difference.
I, I understand that part, what you're saying, but my question is if we're trying to also unify, you know, and minimize and unify from a difference perspective, what's the information that you think would be most pertinent to have on those signs?
Well, I think that the, the address number, we put the street as well. The house name, because people get attached to their house name. I booked Sandy Toes to go on vacation. And then the company, uh, name. I booked with Harris Vacation. I booked with Gulf Shores, right? But to Councilman Fallon's point, I think that we can't, I guess we're not in the business of putting what goes on the sign. You know, I think we're doing, I think that we are doing a service not only to our guests, but also to the first responders that have to get to our properties because it does have the number right there, you know, by the road. I think that if the issue is the clutter, then let's go back and enforce the current standards that we have that say the sign should be this far away from the road. It's one thing Jeff mentioned. You can have up to eight inch numbers, 36 inches wide as a house number on the house. And if people are having a hard time finding the houses and they can't find the house numbers, might need to look internally as to what's actually on these houses and put eight inch letters, 36 inches wide or bigger prior to a, an ordinance that has a size requirement or limitation on it. But I think, I think you're right, 100%. People are looking for the address on the house first and foremost. Whether it's being rented by Harris or Kaiser or, uh, Vicasa or whoever, they're looking for the house number and they're using their, their GPS mapping to get to it. And they're going to track house numbers as they get to the house that they're going to turn into. And yeah, it's probably very nice and reassuring when they see the, who they rented it from is in that, in that position. But as soon as they turn in that driveway and they see your sign on the building, they're going to also get reassured because they'll see that it was rented through Harris.
George?
So at the basic level, safety, city has a contract with Baldwin County, N.A. one. So the numerical, the address number and letter, could be letters also, needs to be approved by them first of all. And then second of all, we have ghost streets where people name streets. They go to Google and, uh, the various, uh, online mapping companies. And they'll name streets that are not actual streets. So they have, they're playing name for a street or something. So that's something else that is pleased by. First responder when we see it, we report it to 911, they, they let it out. That's just the basics. Doesn't address the, how they look or anything, but the numerical number.
First responders use to get to an address?
We have a mapping software. And we use it. It's called First Dude. It's a response software. N.A. one, also the operator has, they do a great job. And they have the maps and the address numbers. They help talk us into the addresses and, or streets. Sometimes people will call it a wreck at the street because they're looking on Google and that street does not exist. So we'll go through work with local city staff and they'll put a sign up and Jenny does a great job. Make that street more identifiable with the correct street name.
As you're going to a.
If it's N.A. one, the N.A. one operator will help guide us then to the correct address. And also the mapping software that we use, so standalone mapping software.
Probably using the address.
It's based on the computerated dispatch.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, you know, I, I think the issue is, is, uh, I think Jeff brings out a good point. It's not, the issue isn't consistent from one part of West Beach to, to another. Up to, um, the Goon Pass, to me, I agree, it is really unsightly. It's disorganized. You've got some signs that are on, on the, uh, the west side of the property. You've got other signs on the east side. Quite frankly, I have difficulty identifying exactly which sign goes with which house sometimes. There's probably 25, 30% of the houses down there that don't have any, uh, street number on them at all. So I think that's an issue. Uh, certainly the placement of the signs, uh, is a hodgepodge. There is no, frankly, it's not been regulated. Uh, you've got all kinds of different sizes of signs out there. I think there are some signs out there that are outside of the current, uh, regulations now. You know, it, it is a business as Jeff and, and Brian are saying. And that brings a lot of revenue to our community and the businesses that operate there. But I think it can be done a little bit better where it's a little more organized. I think we do need to look at it as a difference. You know, where you've got 50 foot lots versus those that are, are bigger lots and certainly with a house further off the road. But requiring the owners to have their, uh, street address on the house, I think is a, is a good idea. That's part of the permitting process when they get to their business license.
What about duplexes? They got two sides.
Well, you got, you, you got, in, in those, those cases, sometimes it's the same owner. Some cases it's separate owners. You, you, it's the same thing. You, you have to requirement for each side of it, whether it's an, um, individual owner or, or multiple owners. But I, I, I agree, it, it does need to be cleaned up. You know, one of the things as I was sitting here thinking and talking about it, I've been in some communities where, uh, the city municipality, whatever, has actually had signs that show this is the 100 block. This is the 200 block. And, uh, I think that's something that the city ought to consider doing.
Yeah, when you have an address that's between 12 and 13, that's a 1,400, 1,400 address. How do you have a 1,400 address between 12 and 13 street?
Yeah, sometimes they don't coordinate with the, with the, the streets that's on the, on the lagoon side. So I, I think something needs to be done. I'm not quite sure where they're right with this. I certainly agree that especially when you get up to, up to the lagoon, it is unsightly. And mostly because it's really not been regulated up till now. It's people just doing what they want to do.
You mean east of the pass?
Yeah.
And even, you know, not to, not to, but from at the pass, it's like 1,700 block to the 2,000 block. That's where the 50 foot lots basically.
Seventy-five foot.
Correct. And then it goes 100 foot. So at 2,001, so I've got owners of 2,009, 17, and 23, all of those are.
2,000 starts.
Right, and that's the lots all the way to the end. And where those are, they're relatively close to the street. But when you get down to the 23, 2,000 block, it's 150 feet off the road. And I know that because the 100 foot driveway exception from Fish and Wildlife, that you don't have to count all of that square footage in the building you're in. So again, it's, it is dark there. Go down there, I mean, we'll be out in the dark. God damn it, you cannot see. And then of course, Fish and Wildlife has got a, cannot put lights. You cannot illuminate anything. You can't put under lighting and you're underpinning. You have to be red lights. You can't see these houses. You cannot. People literally drive, they're standing there and they drive past them. Coming back after being, they cannot see the house.
And even though we, we put our name on there, they don't know who the hell they're booked for half the time when they call it. But, but any, you know, so especially in the 50 foot lots, as I was pointing out earlier, uh, whether on the, on the, uh, the east side or west side of the house, the, the, the distance between the two houses is so close by. Wherever you put that sign, it's difficult to determine, is it this house or is it that house type situation? So the numbers on the house would, would certainly, uh, help. And I think that should be something that's required in the business license process.
There's a consideration for a greater, a big, I mean, these, the numbers right on the, on the. Again, when you, when you say it again, it's two feet, what is it? What's the, what's the dimension?
House numbers?
The house numbers.
Eight inch letters, 36 inch wide.
Eight inch letters, three feet wide.
Three feet wide.
Okay, you put that on.
Could be up to three feet.
Yeah, you put, and you put that on a 30 foot wide house that's 50 feet tall. If it's up there on where he's got it shown, they'll never see it.
I think for address numbers, uh, so the residential code and building code both require, maybe fire code as well. So, uh, I don't have that in front of me. I know they have a minimum of four inches. I believe the language in the code say legible from the street. So.
I'm sorry, guys. I'm going to grant some.
So, so that, that may allow a larger sign.
Priority strike.
By the way, the, the numbers on the signs, we, we, I mean, I'd love to do that. It's not something we just haven't done yet. But I think that actually does solve, if you're 30 feet off the road-ish, I guess it's this 30 feet easement. And it's, it's on the sign and you can see it. And I agree with Brian, the name of the house. People get attached to it, spraying.
It's a business thing. So.
The left inventory to Brian's inventory or his to ours, they're still asking for the house. They don't, they don't really care. They don't, they don't really care who needs it necessarily, it's managing. They'll say ask for it.
Lot of... Rural, rural communities that have houses that's set far away from street side, the requirement from the county or the city is for there to be a house identifier number that's actually the fire department number or something right there if there's not a mailbox. In a lot of places, the mailbox is, you look for the mailbox number, you know where to turn. Well, down there, there's not a lot of mailboxes.
There's, to my knowledge, there's not.
But a, but a, a house number that is a reflective house number that could be placed on a post at some of those areas further west of the pass could be an option where it's not sign clutter, not sign litter, not, uh, real estate signs bumping in place with rental management signs, you know, potentially two signs per lot, um, if you can't see the house number well enough. There might be other options here besides just this one suggestion.
Scott?
Yes.
And I think we're getting a lot of good information on both sides. Can we, can we maybe study this a little bit more before we make a...
Uh, I, I can't, I, I know, I know the council was eager to hear it. And just again, so everybody knows how this works is, uh, if the planning commission took action tonight, all that is, is a recommendation to council. It would go to a council work session where you would typically have an opportunity to speak and then the council would have their own public hearing where you definitely have an opportunity to speak. So this is, whatever the planning commission does today is not changing anything just yet. So there's ample opportunity to, uh, further discuss and then, uh, talk to your elected officials. But we can, I'll say, I know they're eager to at least kind of get it, uh, before them. But I'm, I'm certainly open to any ideas and any changes, any studies.
I see value in the signs. I just think we need to have a more consistent approach with it. I, I don't think, it's a lesser of two evils, in my opinion. You pull back up that slide, if you stick all these signs on these houses, it's going to be unsightly. It's going to look like a NASCAR. There's going to be stuff all over the place. It's going to, the, the house is going to look terrible. I see value in the signs. I'd just like to see some consistency with what's on them.
I'll echo that, I agree. I would like to see something to the effect of all signs, whatever the right of way is, but measure it from the street to cover the right of way, that way it is consistent. All signs be placed on a particular side, east or west of the drive. I think that would also make it easy for code enforcement to be able to identify which signs are out of, um, the ordinance. Yeah. Uh, because it would be visual down the road. And also, I know that a lot of them are not within the correct size currently to get those under control. Again, I do see value in the signs. I know that I can put an address in a, in the GPS and go and it gets me in the general area, maybe within a hundred feet. It says it in a hundred feet, then you start looking for the address or the sign. I've watched firefighters pass my mother's house when I, when I called. I mean, it, it happens. And I think that, that, that they do have a lot of value.
It's a real easy identifier from the, from the easement. It's literally the telephone.
Right.
It's the easement. And that's an easy one, you can look down, these are all lined up. And if your signs are lined up with that, then you're in...
Yeah, and I, and I think it would be a night, I'm not going to say it's going to look nice, but it would be more consistent and more manageable and, 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 you know. When you get pass to pass going to those, and, and I didn't even take into consideration the, the, uh, turtle issues down there, uh, and nothing being lit. And some of those houses are significantly far off the road.
Okay.
I, I agree with the mounting on the houses. I don't think, I don't think that's the solution as well. I think you'll have another issue.
Yeah.
Putting, doing the same thing that we have, just putting on the houses, and I think you've got the same problem.
Yeah.
I, I think, I may be wrong, but I think the, the first presentation where we, several months ago, didn't have that many signs permitted per house and the response was, well, we need, we need a marketing sign, we need a name, a house name sign. And then so we added more proposed signage to the house. And I will agree if you, especially if you're looking at a duplex, each, each unit, dwelling unit having four signs, that's a lot of clutter on the building again. I don't disagree, but, uh, if we, if we had a uniformed sign out by the street and we had a place to put it and we had a certain sized sign, and I don't know what our sign...
Two by three.
Two by three.
I measured one today, it was twenty by, twenty-four wide by thirty tall. And I think that was within the...
Three by two, two by three.
Yeah.
It's a mixture of compliance and enforcement.
So if we, if we had a sign out there and it was smaller than six square feet, what would be the most important thing to put on the sign out in the yard by the street? What would we, we're not regulating your content, I get it, but what we're trying to achieve here, just help me, what's the most important?
Website and the telephone.
Not the address. Not the address. That's four.
That's the sign. If you can visualize, you've got a sign on the post.
Yep.
Below the sign, because each sign, you'd have to customize the sign to be one, two, three, four on the sign if that was the address.
Right.
Instead, there's the...
A rider, rider.
And then there's the number that's below it, like literally right below it. And then the, uh, if you wanted to do the name of the house below that and they're smaller, right, this big, below the, the six square foot sign. Does that make sense? It's on the post, it's like on the post.
Rider post.
But if you're trying to incorporate all of that in a sign, then you would be doing, in many houses, you have customized signs for every single house.
Right, understood.
And it'd become pretty expensive.
Yep, understood. You need a uniform sign and then, that's what I'm trying to get, what, what would be important that goes out at the street? So from your opinion, we would need a six foot, a six square foot sign and at least one tag. Rider.
One reasonable rider, yeah. Yeah, okay, yes. And by the way, for you don't know, the three people that you saw here represent most of the houses that are on the speech. That's all we do. We manage vacation homes only. So that is our, it's all we do. So Kaiser's kind of doing the same, Brian has a mix. They have, there's a lot of houses. Prickett's not here. He would be another person that would have quite a bit of inventory down there. But you're basically talking to the four, Prickett, the four companies that manage most houses in Gulf Shore.
And just so you know, I, I love to mess with Prickett, never heard back. And I also spoke with Hunter, Hunter Harrelson with Beach Ball, so.
And he, he, they have a few as well. And I can get, I can get you Prickett. I mean, Prickett, he's, we're all, I mean, we're all friends, we're all friends. So I mean, so yeah, I would love, we had an opportunity to sit down, and you've been talking to Wilson, that's on. And, you know, but just sit down and spend, I mean, again, we're, we're reasonable people, but I think, I think that, or that change is, that's...
Yeah, well, I'd say, it sounds, so it sounds, what I'm hearing is potentially one freestanding sign, not in the right of way, that's a certain size. And what about any signs on the structure at all?
The name of the house?
No, there's, there's a bunch with them already out there, so.
So we got literally, they literally put the name of their house on the face of the, of the house.
That's fine.
For branding purposes, that's on the house. Some of them have literally like calligraphy to them, some of them have done just, you know, it was mounted on it. But I've got a couple of properties and I, I don't want to, you know, I hate to be the person who's going to give them the bad news, but if, if, if this monument that's out front is not allowed, it's not allowed, I mean, I get that.
Well, also, there's, in here, they're adding a regulation for the name of the house. I bet the majority of those with the calligraphy and all that are already outside of that size.
They're mounted to the houses.
Right.
And then there's some that'll have fences that are, give it some sort of structures when you drive in, they're just like a fence panel that's six feet long and then it might have the name of the house on that. Again, it's just trying to brand these things and, and, and let people know you arrived at the house that you've actually rented.
I don't think the name, the names of the houses to me doesn't bother me at all. Honestly, whatever, whatever size, color, like, that's part of the character of, like you said, their, their branding and they don't, usually they're in the theme of the house, so they're not standing out like a advertisement if you...
Terrence, can we go back to the, so if, so the, the nameplate sign, I guess, is what we're thinking of as the branding, uh, or, or not, I'm sorry, not the, but the, the name, whatever, the Sandy Toes or the Andy's Getaway or whatever it is. The identification sign, the, the idea is that's more for the, the company.
Yeah, that's, that's the real estate company.
Right. So in, in this example, if we remove the identification sign, the six square, six foot identification sign from the facade of the building and made it potentially a freestanding sign, would that be a...
Yes.
Well, I think that's what we have now.
Yeah.
Well, I, I've not measured everybody's, but, uh, but yeah, there's a bunch of...
That's a regulation currently. And I think, for me, it kind of goes back to, I think we have all these rules currently. We're just, you know, we're just not enforcing.
Yeah, so the current regulation says it's whatever the underlying zoning is and signage in the R1 districts, which is virtually all of West Beach, is very limited, so.
But then we have an overlay district.
But, but, but I don't think there's any additional signage that comes along with it, so.
Right now, you can have a real estate sign.
Yeah, you can do it.
Which is a temporary sale sign that's supposed to be only until the house is listed and sold and then removed, not permanent.
Well, it's, I'll take it forever. This is not that, you know, that's not... Yeah, it's a branding of a, of a house.
I think my takeaway from, from the conversations is if, as we're looking at this and council wanting a recommendation of some sort and trying to move forward, we're looking at, we know we want the address numbers on there and maybe even looking at how big those are, requiring them to be a certain size.
I think again, I think there is a requirement when you build a house about how big those structures are.
That, that's what's in the code, the building code.
And they may need to be bigger, is what we're hearing.
We'll look into that.
And then the nameplate sign on the house can be on the facade of the structure. And then the identification sign would be the only other sign that could be in the, in front of the house that we're look, and with that third bullet point, if you will, we're looking at a recommendation for consistency, including distance from the house as well as potentially, or, or size and potentially what's, I don't know that you can control what's on it, but if we're talking just numbers or names or that kind of thing, that's part of the discussion. And then the only other things would be, you know, you have on your no window signs, no signs in the public right of way. The only other thing would be the, the smaller, no parking or whatever, and that's part of it. So that, to me, it seems like a summary of the conversation that we had as far as a recommendation to council, considering those consistencies.
In certain parts of West Beach, when people come down here, and, and I was surprised not being from Alabama, that the beaches are private. When you look at a survey, the survey goes out, which is the wet sand. So the, so the beach in front of these houses is private property. And people who come here, they don't know, so they just see a way to get to the beach and they're going to trespass. And so people put trespassing, will put up sand fence to try to deter people from walking through. So, and again, not to be too prescriptive, but we don't say you're not allowed to put a trespassing sign up on there to tell people you cannot come through and trespass on that property.
That's what those fence detached signs...
Yeah, we're saying those, we're saying those are good.
He's putting those on there.
Those are good.
So George?
One other thing is that, again, the, the nameplate sign at two square feet, I mean, hopefully, we maybe can have some, I guess, a discussion about the size of that. If you're allowing two on a duplex and it's basically four square feet, again, two square feet is not... And then is there any brand bothering, because I've got houses, people have literally already done the names on their houses and they are not two square feet. These are houses that are eighty feet wide and fifty-five feet tall. And so to do two square feet would be, just would...
No, I think we're say, we're saying the nameplate is up to, for size discussion, for sure.
Two, two questions on the, just thinking about the nine one one address, if it's a, if that's on your sign that can blow out in the wind, be removed, that's, that's probably not the place for that unless we put a permanent marker post out in the yard. But do you, nine one one, do you prefer them on the structure?
So we're trying to do it, if you look at them on the structure, but it could be somewhere else. So the key to that is consistency, whatever you come up with. But I think Baldwin, nine one one would be the first, be in the mix, get their opinion, because they design addresses for the quickest type, you know, fastest response, or sure response. But if you start with them, just make sure it meets their requirements, then you can make a decision to have it on the exterior side or on the, on the building.
And the building code requires it on the face.
On the face of the building.
Yeah.
Yeah, and just to clarify, we, you know, the, the address number on the sign is in addition to the address number on the building. It doesn't replace it on the roadside.
Because you also have to have one on the beach side of your beachfront and if you have a walkover, you're supposed to have, and all this, because if you're trying to come from the beach side, you're supposed to be able to see the house on the beach side as well.
Yeah.
So there's a requirement of a...
For the live cars.
Yeah.
Well, my comment was more if we're going to put nine one one numbers on detached signs, they need to be some permanent post, uniform post with the same type of numbering system that can't be moved and doesn't blow over in the wind and that, you know what I'm saying?
My clarification would be that the, the numbers are still going to be on the structure.
Correct.
At least for, for my company. This is just in addition to the numbers on the structure.
So your, your people can find them when they're, when they're coming in.
Just, just one comment, uh, Scott, three, uh, when you were talking about the signs, you said distance from the house.
You, or sorry, distance from the roof.
Just the roof. Okay, I just wanted to be, to clarify that so we didn't go down...
Yeah, that's good.
We, we, we would probably word that as, as, again, outside the right of way, just because we don't want any signs in the, in the city or the state right of way.
Right.
That's a liability we don't want and it's hard, so, you know, we would, it may vary distance from the road to where that right of way line is, so.
Right. My suggestion would be to make it so it always falls without, and that way it is a, it follows the curvature of the road.
Okay. Okay. Time is of the essence here, guys. We were doing a lot of talking, we talked about this all night.
Try to make a motion?
Close the public hearing and I'm going to ask for a motion from my commissioner.
Are we really ready to act on this yet or do we need to kick this can down?
Table.
You can, you can make a motion accordingly.
I'd like to make a motion and table this further discussion.
Second.
Hold in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're taping, sorry.
So we'll, we'll be at the November eighteenth, what is that date?
I believe it is the November eighteenth meeting.
Same place, same time, November eighteenth. I'll probably, your caller emailed me, we'll, we'll keep talking.
Yeah, sorry to be, I don't even mean to be short with you guys, but we could be talking about this all night.
The meeting has moved up, this is the Thanksgiving holidays, it will be...
But just, yeah, just reach out to him. Oh, you're missing the really exciting discussion next.
Okay, next order of business, change of notification requirement, zoning text amendment.
No, no, I'm staying for this one.
Point of comfort.
So I, I will try to, th- this would need a little discussion, but I will try to, um, I'll tell you what, let me, let me wait a minute for everybody to, to get back before I, I jump in, I'm sorry.
He's, he had to leave. We got people that got to go to baseball game, I mean, good night, y'all.
All right, well, okay, I'll, I'll go ahead and begin, uh, we can catch up. So the request here is to modify the, this one is for the zoning requirement, uh, zoning text requirements for notifications prior to, uh, public hearings. Right now, the, for a rezoning, the zoning ordinance requires a newspaper ad to be run at least fifteen days prior to the meeting. It requires certified mail to all property owners within seven hundred and fifty feet of the subject property. Now, that goes before planning commission and city councils, so that's a double mailing of certified mail. And then we have to post a notice or post a sign, uh, out front of the, of the, uh, subject site fifteen days prior to the meeting. So for an example, this is the, on the left is the Oyster Point, uh, newspaper ad that we ran, that cost four hundred and ninety dollars, uh, in the newspaper. It does, uh, it's Gulf Shore's media, so it's four different newspapers throughout Baldwin County, uh, and that cost is passed to the applicant, the city's not bearing that. However, we do believe in twenty twenty-five, uh, newspaper ads are not the most useful way to, to get the message out. The real difficulty that we run in on this one, uh, run into the paper is, uh, it, we have to get it to the newspaper about four weeks before the meeting. it, we have to get it to the newspaper about four weeks before the meeting. And what happens is we run the ad before we've had a chance to fully review these applications. And then we realize, oh, there's some whatever, it's not ready. So now that's, you start seeing these deferrals and it gets confusing, and then the people show up because it got advertised, and we're like, oh, sorry, come back next month. So, so that, that's, uh, just a, a logistic problem that, that happens. On the right is just a shot in two thousand twelve, so several years ago, the city council, uh, determined that there were no papers published within the municipal limits of, uh, Gulf Shores. That's significant because state law has some requirements about, uh, ordinances and where they're published. And so, so the, the council doesn't even publish things in the newspaper, and they haven't since two thousand twelve. We still do, the planning commission still does. Uh, the certified mail going out to everyone within seven hundred and fifty feet. So according to USPS, certified mail, really all that does is give you a receipt that something was mailed, uh, and potentially it's something was received. It's no additional guarantee that the mail will actually make it on time or anything, it just costs more money. It costs ten dollars and forty four cents per letter now. So that's kind of pricey. Uh, so for example, this was Villas Banse Cor. They had, uh, one hundred and fifty eight, uh, properties within seven hundred and fifty feet. Now we do remove duplicates, so they mailed out, or we mailed out, one hundred twenty one letters for that rezoning. Twelve hundred sixty three dollars one time, and they had to do that before council as well, so they paid over twenty five hundred dollars just in certified letters to let all their neighbors know that, uh, they were considering their rezoning. Uh, and lastly is the posted notice. Uh, I put the sign on that back wall, that little yellow sign. Uh, the sign's a great thing, however, in the ordinance, it specifically specifies, like, we have to put the date and time and the case number and everything, and at some point, that's just simply kind of back to the, the, uh, vacation rental discussion. Too much on there is just not legible, no one's, they see a yellow whatever and they may stop and pull over and cause traffic, so that may not be effective as well, all that, all the information that's on there. Our request is to simply end the ordinance to codify just what we're required to do. So right now, in order to have any kind of meeting, city council, planning commission, any other kind of public body, you have to follow the Open Meetings Act. Uh, we'll talk more about that when we get into the bylaws discussion, but Alabama Open Meetings Act has some requirements on notification requirements, executive sessions, you know, deliberation, things like that, so we certainly have to follow that. And then the Code of Alabama eleven fifty two states how and what has to be advertised as well, so we have to do those regardless. Our request is to, is to not have all these extra things in the zoning ordinance that may become antiquated, reduces our opportunity for flexibility because we have to go through this, uh, amendment process if and when we want to change up. What we're proposing is to send regular first class mail. Let me back up on the certified thing, I don't know if anyone's gotten a certified letter before, but it's usually like a little fly, a little piece of paper, a little green thing in your mailbox that says, oh, you got a certified letter, you, if you weren't home, and no one is, you have to go to the post office and sign it or wait for the post, uh, postal care to show up. Then people think it's like a summons or something and they don't pick it up, so it's really, again, your people aren't getting the letters a lot of times. First class mail will go to your mailbox. I think there's some room for discussion on that distance. Right now we're doing seven fifty, which is a lot, uh, but we'll look at that in a moment. We also intend to, uh, order larger signs. So that yellow sign back there is eighteen inches by twenty four inches, we would like to go for just a regular yard sign.
Don't go two by three, no larger than two by three.
We were looking at two by three. Six square feet. Actually, I'm, I'm getting ahead of my slides, so let me, let me back up. Uh, larger signs, uh, we're posting the draft agendas earlier, online map and social media, so let me, I have, I do have slides for these. So I just chose a random lot over here on the east side of town. Uh, those buffers, the red is a five hundred foot buffer, that's a hundred parcels in, within five hundred feet. Green is seven fifty, that's a hundred ninety three, and blue's a thousand with two hundred forty five, so that's a lot of letters, that's a lot of people being notified, so right now we're sending out certifies to seven hundred fifty feet, which is, I think, excessive, particularly on the certified side, so that was one of my questions I wanted to ask the commission if they had any, uh, preference or discussion on that distance.
That's for rezoning.
Well, we probably do this for anything that's a public hearing, uh, as far as the zoning ordinance goes, yeah. So, uh, that's another thing, we, we want to, we want some uniformity in our notification, because when we had one day and different, so. Yeah, and variances, so anything that's going to be a public hearing that's going to be heard. And again, this will be supplementary that we'll do, but we're not going to codify, so if we find a better method, we can just do it.
With the first class, keep it the same distance as do first class and save eighty percent of the money?
Uh, yeah, it'd save us, again, that's passing it on to the applicant, but I think that's a, that's kind of onerous on the applicants for twenty five hundred dollars of certified letters, that probably.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's over eighty percent of the, the cost, so. I, I would recommend keeping it the same distance, but go the cheaper route with the mail.
Okay, I can get behind that.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'll go, I'm late. Yeah, you're not going to like mine anyway, I might as well go last.
That's why I put a thousand on here.
So I'm actually the other way, I, I think the more people that you can notify, particularly a zoning change where you've got, you're, you're affecting a neighborhood, you're not just affecting the property owners that are abutting and are very close to abutting, I think the larger size, the thousand, is appropriate, and at eighty cents of a, a letter, that's not onerous to me, and I think it's important to do that.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
I, I, I concur, I think the more communication, the more people we can notify, the less problems we're going to have at rezoning meetings, the less disgruntled people we're going to have, we're reducing the cost. And you know, this particular model in this neighborhood, it's, it's a dense neighborhood.
I might have done that on purpose.
No, you didn't, no you didn't. I wasn't going to call you out on that.
If it were Martin Woods, it'd be us.
There are plenty of places in town where a thousand feet may not be enough for a rezoning because it impacts the road, the traffic. I mean, the change of use to a neighborhood, to neighborhoods with collector roads, I mean, I, I, I think it, zoning changes need all we can get.
Okay.
Just me.
So a thousand first class, all right.
But also, on that point, the reason that the letters were only sent to seven hundred fifty feet is because you were also advertising to the mass in a newspaper. And your assumption back when people read newspapers was that people would see it and read it, and that would basically be the whole community if they were interested in that zoning change or whatever, but now, if that goes away and you're not exactly sure how social media or website or emails will be, uh, received, I, I think, you know, maybe, I don't know if you can do it more arbitrary based on what the zoning change is or where it's occurring, maybe it is by density.
I think about coastal gateway and some of those vacant parcels, there's a five acre parcel, I mean, if we, if that came up for rezoning at a thousand feet, we're probably going to notify twenty homeowners.
Yeah.
And everybody on coastal gateway could be impacted, so.
Well, that apartment complex that was part of our discussion on the, on the.
Nobody would have got that number.
That's on, yeah. See, that's, that to me is not sufficient, I don't know how we get around that, but.
Yeah, that, that, that may be just one of those, our standard is a thousand, and then we, again, if it's, since we have, we could have the flexibility, we could just say, hey, yeah, five's not enough, let's expand that buffer and, or, or go more of a linear or something like that, so, yeah.
The signs that are posted are, need to be, when we're talking about, well, I don't know how large, I, I, I wouldn't worry about how big they got, if they're effective.
Right.
And how long are they up?
Thirty days.
Well, we're, as written today, they're supposed to be, I think, fifteen days prior to the meeting and then seven days prior to council, so.
So what has to be on the sign?
Well, we'll, we'll get there, let me, let me, let me keep going. So here's the signs. So my, my preference would be for the yard signs to do two by three, six square feet. That's just a little more legible, a little more easier to read. I would probably take away some of the extra language, I would, I would do huge letters, public hearing, contact the planning department at, you know, this phone number, this email address, this website. We're actually exploring QR codes um, that may be, uh, unique to the development or may just take you to a, a standard landing page, so we're kind of researching that. Uh, that would probably be the most common sign. Now, where I used to work, we did two by three and then we did four by four. I'll tell you the one of the reasons we did four by four is that was what would fit in the back of our truck, but that's, that's half the size of a four by eight, uh, standard core plaste sheet. And so it's cost effective, but that, that's pretty big. We would do two, um, uh, uh, fence posts on either side and then just, uh, do the four by four. So if you're on, on the side of fifty nine, you know, that you have a, a decent right of way, that's much more effective. So we, we would, you know, order ten or twelve of those and have those for those more high traffic, faster traffic, so, so they're much more visible.
I, I love that, I think, notice a public hearing within thirty days, I wrote the same thing down, QR code, telephone number, website, and have that QR code redirect to the planning and zoning website where they can hit the agenda.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're aiming for.
That's awesome.
My only comment would be, the information needs to be legible from the street, because they're not going to probably get out and go.
Well, yeah, that's why.
If we can't get all that on the two by three and it be effective, let's don't limit our sign, let's make the, let's make the, what we put on there legible and effective.
That's next. All right. So, uh, the next proposed supplementary notice is this online map, and if, if Terrence will, uh, swap over to that, so we put this together. So if you, if you go to this link and you'll see, and we're still working on it, you'll see there's polygons, so if Terrence, if you'll choose one, so you click on that polygon and that pop up tells you, hey, that's Riley Farms five and six, preliminary plat, planning commission today at four o'clock. And you can even link to the agenda, I think if you scroll down, there may be a little more. Okay, yeah, so it's a quick description adding, well, that's not correct, but, uh, add, adding single family lot, so. So again, this is, I can look at the map, I know where I live, or I should know where I live, I can see is something near me happening, or just wherever, uh, coastal gateway or, uh, uh, out here at, um, Brights Creek, so, so again, this is another, another means to make sure the public is aware or has the opportunity to see what's happening and what's coming up.
Love that, all right.
See, and this is actually live right now, but we hadn't really done anything with it, but, so, all right.
He is opening up, uh, public hearing, there's nobody here.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm not done yet.
Well, you're not done, I'm sorry.
I know, we're trying to go home, I'm, I'm trying.
It's okay, we'll stay here another hour, that's fine, I'm not.
All right, yeah. Andy's buying dinner for everybody.
I was going, so you're buying dinner tonight?
And, and then this is something that we did, we did this month is, we're going to try to get the agenda itself out earlier. So this, this month, we posted it seven days ago, we got the, just the agenda itself, we got it out, we sent it to all of you earlier, we posted on the website earlier. So again, this is yet another way to get it out there, uh, for more people to have an opportunity to see what's going on. The packet will still do Fridays before, just because that's, it's not practical to do it much sooner with the agenda we can. Let's see if I got anything else, I'm trying.
We're still on ZDA twenty five oh five, right?
Yes, sir. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, yeah, so, uh, if you look at the screen, thi, this is just a screenshot of the agenda center. That red box that's highlighting right there, that notify me, that's, that's a very useful, if you click on that, you can input your email address and you'll get an email every time any of these agendas or packets are posted, so city council, uh, planning commission, board of adjustment, things like that, so that's just a FYI for everybody, that's really handy. Uh, we're also, you know, we have a fantastic communications team here, um, so I've talked with them, our public engagement manager on, uh, utilizing social media better. Uh, it'll probably be more of a, hey, there's a meeting coming up, click here to go to the agenda, but take advantage of that, that's, that's the way many, many people now get their news. All right, I'm finally at the end of this one, so my recommendation is to approve, and this would be a recommendation to council because it's a zoning text amendment.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve ZA twenty five zero five, second.
All in favor?
Is there a discussion? So are we, are we, are we locking ourselves into a thousand feet, which was recommended, or are we able to expand that? Are we locking ourselves into particular sizes of signs, or is that coming after?
None of that's in the code.
Okay.
So it's all going to be what staff does, so, so, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll report back to you before.
Okay.
Like we buy anything or do anything.
So the action we take tonight is only just to change what we're doing, but doesn't define what we are supposed to do?
Well, it does define what you're supposed to do, so it'll define that we had to follow Open Meetings Act and we had to follow state code. All that, everything else is just supplementary, extra that we do out of courtesy. So, and, and part of that is how the courts are, if, if we write in in our zoning orders, subdivision regs, and we don't do it, then we've invalidated the process, so I don't want to run into the, we put a sign out and it gets knocked over and then we get accused of not putting a sign out, so. So, see, we are defining what we will do, but all this extra is still, is going to be a, an internal process.
I do, the mailing part, I think, should be defined because we hear that a lot from the public saying, you know, I didn't receive.
I didn't get a letter, yeah.
Yeah, so I think we should.
Yeah, and we'll still have those lists, I mean, we'll still make the applicants provide the list and, and provide, provide the envelopes and everything, it just needs certified.
Do we have that, like, distance, though? You know, right?
We would tell them what, it's in our checklist.
Yeah.
So if it was a rezoning that would affect multiple things, then God would say, I think this is one of those cases where we go out to God. You know, we're just not, it's not written in style, so it allows us to.
I would, I would probably put in a minimum, yeah, so that we have something to stand by.
Yeah, currently our checklist, part of it says you've got to, uh, provide notifications within
seven hundred fifty feet.
You get the notifications, got to be certified from Baldwin County, revenue department, so we would have to have something in there, I guess.
Yeah, we, we put that in there.
We, when we meet with them, we say, in this instance, it's only, you know, you need to go a little bit further, I guess.
I'd, I'd like to have a minimum of a thousand feet in our, in our action tonight as a minimum, so that we're.
That's what's in there. No, that's what the ordinance says.
Okay.
Or that's what the.
Well, that, that's not the ordinance, that's just what we discussed as an internal policy, so it's.
I can add a thousand minimum in there, but does that not open us up? If we're changing it, does that not open us up for an issue later on down the road? Like, if we say a thousand minimum, but then here we decided it needed to be, so what's that process going to be?
Well, we, we would do a thousand.
Yeah, how are we deciding that scale, because now we're doing something different than what we.
I think that's what we're saying, is just, it's, we have a minimum, but it can be decided to go higher than that, depending on the project, depending on the street, depending on the density.
Where it is.
Where it is.
And that is.
If you establish the minimum at a thousand, that the current status.
Anything more is better, so.
If someone is to say, well, I didn't get a letter, there's a minimum, and, and I live within the minimum of a thousand square feet, you know, we're, we're complying with that, too, and then, but we can go above and beyond that where we see appropriate.
Man, we can put that verbiage in the ordinance, it's, if, if we need to, that the minimum is a thousand feet unless staff determines more is necessary. Or, you know, some language in there where they, they're not going to kick back on you if you say, hey, we, we're in a commercial district or we've got, and we're not reaching but five people, we need to go to two thousand feet. And if we put it in there as a minimum, but at your discretion, knowing that the goal is to do more than less.
Yeah.
You what?
We can't change that.
We'd be better served driving to Mobile and putting them in the box over there, wouldn't we? Will they go to Mobile before they come back here and go across the street, y'all? Oh, come on.
All right, we got a motion on the floor.
Motion.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Who seconded it?
Fallon seconded his own motion.
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. All right. SDR twenty five oh two, sir.
All right, this is, uh, very closely related and essentially the same thing, but this is subdivision regs. You control the subdivision regulations, this is not a recommendation to city council. So right now, the subdivision regs require certified mail to all property owners within one hundred feet of the site, again, it's kind of, uh, we talked about certified mail. Uh, again, our recommendation is to change the requirements to simply say, we'll follow the Alabama, Alabama Open Meetings Act and, uh, Alabama Code eleven fifty two. What Alabama Code eleven fifty two says is for all preliminary pla, or all plats, as you, we have to send a certified letter to adjoining property owners within five days of the meeting, which is probably not adequate, but that's what the law says. So our proposal would be to send certified letters to all adjoining property owners. We're looking probably more like fifteen days or, or maybe even more. But in addition to that, send that first class mail to all property owners, I put five hundred, but we can bump that to a thousand. So certified, like state law says, the thousand. So certified, like state law says, the thousand, so it's consistent with everything else. The large signs, the draft agendas, uh, out earlier, online agenda map and social media. So again, we're, we're trying to have a consistent, um, notification process. So really, the big difference with plats would be that certified requirement that state code says, so we don't have a choice there.
Okay. Move to approve.
Thank you.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're going to mirror the thousand feet.
Are we doing the thousand feet?
Yeah, we're going to mirror the thousand, we're going to mirror the thousand feet for first class.
Yay.
Okay, now, next. Here's the first, okay, other business, communications from staff.
Uh, just a quick moment, uh, reminder. I emailed everybody, but the, the plan was to discuss bylaws, uh, coming up. I may get that on the November agenda. Uh, it's a good opportunity to review them. I think they were last adopted two thousand and seven. So may, you know, order of business, things like that. We, we, we may kind of go through those. Uh, the planning department has an objective for two thousand and twenty-six of rewriting the subdivision regulations. Uh, that, that is a big deal. That will take some time. Uh, so, uh, in the meantime, if there's anything you do like, don't like, any suggestions, please send them my way. We'll, we'll start, put together some really rough drafts to get that, uh, discussion started. We do intend to do them in-house. Uh, I imagine there will be a handful of work sessions, so we'll have to kind of schedule those, uh, periodically. Another reminder is, according to your current bylaws, officer elections are in November. So if anybody needs to do T-shirts, button signs, go ahead and start campaigning for that. Follow, follow the rules. Um, and I did want to jot it down, uh, they were discussing ways. Uh, just FYI to everybody, the city now has a relationship, uh, with ways. So we have the ability to, uh, plan closures, like the shrimp festival or, or some kind of construction. We can put that into ways to help people better route if they follow it. So, uh, that is, uh, just, I figured you might be interested. I jotted that down. That's all I had from my side. I'm, I'm done talking.
Has everybody passed their, uh, what's the?
Capsule.
Capsule, capsule. Are we in compliance? Everybody's good?
Can we get some tickets?
Uh, we, we're about to, we have a couple of two up here, and, um, you have staff certified, and you have, uh, almost already.
Okay, I want to, I want to, uh, congratulate this young lady right here for her election to the, to the.
City council.
Thank her for her great work on the commi- we're going to miss you on the commission. We really are. And you've been a very, um, you've been involved heavily in parking and all the other things you're involved. We appreciate your input, and we're going to miss you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. Go bug somebody else.
No, I didn't say that. Didn't say that. That's all I had. Motion to adjourn for somebody?
Good move.
Some move. Okay, we're out of here. Can I make a quick presentation before we leave?